All right, I think we're going to get started. We've got an invocation this morning from the Reverend Trina Bowes North of Crown Heights United Methodist Church. Following that, Councilman Todd Stone will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please join me in prayer. Loving God, we give you thanks for this day and all of the good held within it. We believe that good is only possible through you, oh Lord, the good of community, of people watching out for each other, the good of diversity and creativity, the good of kindness and compassion, justice and joy. On this election day, we pray for goodness to win. We give thanks for each and every name on our ballots, for the willingness to serve and the sacrifice in running. And we pray for all of those elected, including these elected officials in this room, to keep their egos in check, their vision wide, and their minds open, so that good can flow through them and all of their decisions. Today, bless the city council's work. May it bless this city with goodness today and in the days to come. Amen.
(inaudible) All right, I call this meeting of the city council to order, and we do have quite a
few items under office of the mayor, item three. And so the first couple of them, we'll start down below, so just give me a moment. All right, if I could ask Heather Pierce to come forward. We will start with you. You are the Teacher of the Month for November, and we are very grateful for your work in the classroom and for all our teachers in Oklahoma City. We have 24 school districts in Oklahoma City. That's not probably talked about enough, and Crooked Oak is very close here to downtown Oklahoma City, and that's where you serve. And we'd like to learn a little bit more about you before we actually vote on this resolution. And so I would ask the clerk to please read.
Whereas Heather Pierce has been named Teacher of the Month for November by Crooked Oak Public Schools and the Rotary Club of Oklahoma City. Heather is an outstanding graduate of West Texas A&amp;M University, and Heather is in her ninth year of teaching. She began her career in the Child Development Center of Oklahoma City Community College, where she served Oklahoma City students birth to five years of age, and has been a first grade teacher at Crooked Oak for four years. Whereas at Central Oak Elementary, Heather has been a leader in the forefront of project-based classroom instruction, literacy innovation, hands-on learning champion, and development of standards-based instruction. She is a leader among her peers, and most of all, loves Crooked Oak students with all her heart. Whereas Heather is committed to the whole child in her classroom and schoolwide, she has created a makerspace area in her classroom for creativity. She started a yoga class in the after-school program to promote health and well-being. She is a soccer coach and has taken her teams to victory in championships year after year, and she encourages all students to explore the wonder of situations and encourages creativity in learning. Whereas Heather attended a workshop at Arizona State University on sustainability and came back and implemented a composting project with a group of students which included research, composting, presentations, and more. Whereas Heather is deeply invested in Crooked Oak community and brings her own children to the school, and is very involved with and supportive of the students and families. Now therefore be it resolved by the mayor and council of the city of Oklahoma City that they do hereby recognize and commend Heather Pierce on her selection as the November 2018 Teacher of the Month by Crooked Oak Public Schools and the Rotary Club of Oklahoma City.
All right, well, thank you. Now, I think, is Crooked Oak in Ward Seven, Councilman Cooper?
Yes.
All right, would you like to make a motion on this resolution?
I'll move.
Okay. Got a motion and a second? Why don't we go ahead and cast our votes? Passes unanimously. You are the Teacher of the Month.[335.81][335.81](applause) Now, to be successful, everybody's got to have a support system. I know we're joined by your husband and your principal here today, and we would love it if you would share a few remarks with us.
I am honored to be selected as Teacher of the Month. It's nice to be selected, but for something that you love every day, whenever you come to work, to see those smiling faces is just a joy. I love my kids, I love the families that we serve at Crooked Oak, and I'm just honored by this, so thank you.
Thank you. Let's hear it for Heather one more time. Thank you for all you do. This is yours to keep. Very grateful.[376.31][376.31](applause) All right, if Shamra Gibson would come forward. Our possible Employee of the Month.[389.00][389.00](laughter) All right, we'd love to learn a little bit more about you, so if the clerk would please read.
Whereas Shamra Gibson has been a city employee for 11 years and is a System Support Specialist for, for the Infrastructure Support Division of the Information Technology Department. Whereas in the last year, Shamra and her team were assigned the responsibility of moving more than 750 servers to a new data center while limiting the impact on city operations as much as possible. Whereas Shamra completed the project in less than five months, when the completion time was estimated at one year. Shamra and her team worked many nights and weekends to avoid interfering with business hours and operations. She developed standard operating procedures for all aspects of the day-to-day operations of the new data center, improving system security and reliability. Whereas Shamra's accomplishments were commended by stakeholders and customers throughout the city, who expressed how well-organized the data center move was. Whereas Shamra was recognized by a Dell Technologies employee for her ability to identify new technologies that would benefit the city, her leadership skills, innovative thinking, and ability to influence others. Whereas this council desires to recognize Shamra Gibson for her dedication, professionalism, and commitment to the residents of the city of Oklahoma City. Now therefore be it resolved by the mayor and council of the city of Oklahoma City that they do hereby thank and commend Shamra Gibson, November 2018, South Oklahoma City Quanis Club Employee of the Month.
Thank you. Wow, that's, you know, this is such a great example of the kind of behind-the-scenes work that our 4,500 city employees do to make sure that the services that our city provides our citizens are, meet their expectations. And I just can't thank you enough for all that you do. You're a great example of our, what I think are the nation's greatest city employees. I would, whereabouts do you live in? Do you live in Oklahoma City? South Oklahoma City? How about, how about a motion from Councilman Greenwell? And then, and how about a second from Councilman Stone? And let's go ahead and cast our votes. Passes unanimously. You are the Employee of the Month.[534.41][534.41](applause) And in my office earlier, Shamra did agree to say one or two words.
This is quite an honor, I really appreciate it, and I'd like to thank my team and everybody in the IT department for all their support during this move. It impacted not only us, but everybody in IT, so I'd like to say thank you.
Thank you. Let's hear it for Shamra.[562.82][562.82](applause) Why don't we have, why don't we have Councilman Cooper come on down here?
So, early in my tenure, we were faced with the challenge of replacing a council member. In our procedure, it's not my, it's not my favorite, because it means that eight people who do not live in the ward select who represents that ward. And, and that was, you know, fraught with peril for me and for this council. But as we worked through the process and we reviewed the applications for those who were interested and willing to serve, and I commend all the people who were willing to serve, but as we got through that process and I talked with, I tried to reach out to community leaders across Ward Seven representing all kinds of different parts of the community, and it was universal. I mean, it really, it was, it was the most universal thing of my mayoral tenure, the praise and admiration for then Pastor Lee Cooper, Pastor Dr. Lee Cooper. And so it was my pleasure to, to see him selected by the council and ultimately become Councilman Lee Cooper. And you have stepped right into this role, and it's been seamless, and it's been great. But unfortunately, today's election day, which means that it is your last (laugh), it is your last meeting. I'm barring some Bush-Gore fiasco today in Ward Seven.[648.82][648.82](laughter) This is it for you, so. So, but let's, we do have a resolution here, and to learn a little bit more about your background and, and your time here at City Hall, I would ask the clerk to read.
Whereas Dr. Lee E. Cooper was born and raised in Oklahoma and has held leadership positions in the ministry, government, and his community for more than three decades. Whereas as senior pastor at Prospect Church, Reverend Cooper has grown his church to more than 1,500 members, and led the way for the construction of a state-of-the-art sanctuary and a youth and education facility. Whereas Dr. Cooper's previous service to his community has included representing Ward Seven on the Oklahoma City Planning Commission and is chaplain to the Oklahoma State Senate. Whereas Dr. Cooper has also served as a member of the Board of Directors for the Southwestern Urban Development Corporation, the Board of Directors of the Urban League of Greater Oklahoma City, and vice-chair and board member of the Kipp College Preparatory School. Whereas he is a graduate of Leadership Oklahoma City and in 2015 received the KRMP Public Servant of the Year Award. Whereas when circumstances called for a community leader to fill the vacated Ward Seven council seat, Dr. Cooper, as he has done for more than 30 years, volunteered to represent his community. Whereas as a candidate for appointment to council, Dr. Cooper received universal words of praise and respect from all segments of the Ward Seven community. Whereas Dr. Cooper was sworn in as Councilman Cooper on Tuesday, June 19th, before family and friends, and he stepped right into the role with ease, serving Ward Seven with honor, passion, integrity, and intelligence. Whereas there is no question that Councilman Cooper will remain an important leader in Ward Seven in the years ahead, and someone that city leaders will continue to turn to for advice and counsel. Now therefore be it resolved by the mayor and council of the city of Oklahoma City that they do hereby thank and commend Dr. Lee E. Cooper for his selfless service to the people of Ward Seven and the city of Oklahoma City, and we wish him and his family the best in their future endeavors.
Very good. And before we, this is, again, this is a resolution, Lee, so we're going to have to,[799.12][799.12](laughter) we're going to have to vote on this, and I'm not going to entertain a motion from you, so.[803.51][803.51](laughter) But why don't we go around and have a little debate on this? Is there any comments that anybody would like to, to share?
It's been really good getting to know you. I didn't know you before you were on the council, and you're clearly a man of integrity and full of service, so I appreciate your time on the council.
I'm just proud of us as a council. I think we knocked it out of the park to steady the ship.[829.43][829.43](laughter) Seriously, I mean, we, and we couldn't have done better, and I just, I have sadness that you're leaving. I hope that if it's right for you and your family that you, that you run for office one day, and I hope, Francis, do you write those resolutions? I mean, that was perfect. Okay, that was perfect at the end, whoever wrote it, but I hope that we continue.[848.82][848.82](laughter) Good job. It was well said, well said. I hope that we continue to, continue to lean on you as a city. Thank you.
Dr. Cooper, it's a privilege to have met you and have been able to serve with you over these last several months, but probably the most important takeaway that I have is the way that you treat and love your family. And I've watched you take care of them on a number of occasions, last night being one of them, and here to be commended for your commitment to your Lord, and to your family, and to the people of Oklahoma City. May God bless you.
Councilman, thank you for your integrity and your passion for Ward Seven, and I just, I think it's great in your short time here that Ward Seven could rest easy, that they were very, very well represented.
Dr. Cooper, I will certainly miss you, and I hope, as we've said before, that you somehow find your way back here. It's been an honor to serve with you, and I understand why you have such a successful church. You've just been a tremendous leader. Thank you.
Lee, it's been wonderful to share a seat with you. I've really enjoyed the giggles that we've had in, in private and in public. Appreciate your demeanor and just really have enjoyed serving with you.
You know, I think if there was an Oklahoma City dictionary and you looked up the word "leader," there would be Dr. Lee Cooper's picture. You are an incredible leader. As I looked at the resolution last night and I saw all the things you're doing with a 1,500-member congregation, and to watch you here almost on a daily basis, working with staff and Debbie Martin to make Ward Seven a better place, I am so impressed with what you've done. You're a man of integrity, honor, and I can't wait till we meet again to work on another project.
Well, I'm going to give you a chance to speak, but why don't we go ahead and take care of this business? And I thought maybe your horseshoe neighbors could, could make the motion in the second.
I would second.
All right, we've got a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously, of course. And Pastor Cooper, Councilman Cooper, if you wouldn't mind saying a few words.
Now, you know I'm a minister, so how much time do I have?[994.43][994.43](laughter) Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Council members. It's been a real pleasure to be able to serve in this capacity for these few months. I've known Jim for a number of years, and thank you for your leadership and your service in Oklahoma City. Mr. Mayor, I have with me my wonderful and lovely wife, Catherine. If you would just wave your hand, please. Good to have her here today. And the tremendous sacrifice that my family makes to allow me to do what I do, and I'm grateful to God for her. Good to see you, Stefan. Good to see you. And I want to say thanks to Debbie Martin and Beverly Asbury, who, who really makes the, the job easy. Thank you so very, very much for your commitment to the city of Oklahoma City and you serving. And then to all of those that I've had opportunities to meet and work with, with staff, thank you so much for your dedication. Mr. Mayor, we appreciate you so very, very much. The end.[1066.83][1066.83](laughter)[1067.83][1067.83](applause)
All right, now, on to the business. We still are under office of the mayor, and we have items D, E, and F, which will all require executive sessions. Do we need to take separate votes on executive? Okay, all right. So this first one is D2, enter into executive session to discuss performance evaluation salary of the city auditor. In regards to this item and the next item, we traditionally, as my understanding, obviously this predates me, would do this around this time each year with a, with a salary to take effect the following January 1. I understand that this most recent situation, we did it in March, and retroactively made the salary January 1 of 2018, but we're trying to get back on that old schedule again. So, that's why this is on today's agenda, and I would entertain a motion to go into executive session on D2.
Move the items.
Got a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. We'll handle that at the end of the meeting. E2 is to enter into an executive session to discuss the performance evaluation and salary of the municipal counselor. I would entertain a motion here as well.
Move to executive session.
We've got a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. We will handle that executive session at the end of the meeting as well. And then finally, 3F. We, in one of our previous meetings, we adopted a resolution laying out a procedure that we are so far following, and that is to replace our retiring city manager, and so this is a major step in that process. We closed applications Thursday at 5:00, and we have those to review, and for very understandable reasons, state law does provide for those discussions about individuals to occur in executive session, and so I would entertain a motion to do that. Here, 3F, enter into executive session to review and discuss the applications and resumes of those people interested in the office of city manager.
Tom moved.
We've got a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously, and we will handle that at the end of the other business as well. That brings us to the Journal of Council Proceedings. Items A and B, we can take those as one motion.
Move the items.
We've got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none? Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item 5, request for uncontested continuances. Mr. Couch?
Mr. Mayor, a couple this morning, starting on page 8 on the consent docket. Item 7, Q2 and 7, Q3, those are final acceptance of projects, but we omitted the acceptance of the maintenance bonds on them, so we want to bring them back in a couple of weeks to...
One and two?
Two and three.
Okay.
Yeah, 7, Q2 and 3 on page 8. So we'll bring those back at the next council meeting with that language corrected. And then moving to page 23, under item 9, K1D, 1912 Northeast Grand, we ask that we strike that item. The owner secured. Item E, 1503 North Independence, we ask that that be stricken. We need to re-notify. And item J, 3308 South Shields, we ask that that be stricken. We need to re-notify. Moving to page 24, under item 9, L1, 1912 Northeast Grand, we ask that that be stricken. Owner has secured. And finally, item H, 1503 North Independence, we ask that that be stricken. We need to, we need to re-notify.
All right, that brings us to item 6, revocable permits. Item A, under item 6, is revocable permit with the Quail Community Foundation to hold the Creek Run Turkey Trot on November 24th on Quail Creek Park and Quail Creek Road. And I believe we do have someone who has signed up to speak. Please come forward, and I, I have a tough time with the handwriting there, so if you wouldn't mind just stating your name and address.
It's Janaye Allert.
Okay, thank you. Welcome.
Thank you.
Just go ahead and maybe tell a little bit about the event.
Okay. This is our third annual Creek Run. It's a fundraiser for the Quail Community Foundation, and we use the proceeds as part of our beautification project. We're updating some entrances to the Quail Creek neighborhood, so Quail Creek neighborhood, located in the northwest part of Oklahoma City, one of the largest subdivisions in the city, and just one of our, you know, several fundraisers that we put on throughout the year. There's a one-mile fun run and a 5K, and then we have a party in the park afterwards. So the revocable permit is to close down a portion of Quail Creek Road along the city park, just for a couple hours on November 24th.
Okay, well, thank you.
The new entrances are beautiful, and I'd be honored to move the item.
Second. Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none? Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Thank you. Have a great event. 6B, revocable right-of-way use permit with Stockyard City Main Street to hold the India Shrine Fall Ceremonial Parade on November 17th along Exchange at, between Penn and South Agnew, and we've got Todd Branson has signed up to speak. Todd, if you wouldn't mind stating your name and address.
My name's Todd Branson. I'm the executive director and CEO of Stockyard City and Stockyard City Main Street. And I'm sorry if I'm gimpy. A horse stepped on my foot last week, so.[1455.83][1455.83](laughter)
Sorry, a horse stepped on your foot? Is that what you said? Okay, that's a very Stockyard City injury.
It is, yes. It's very appropriate.
It's on brand, that's good.[1464.41][1464.41](laughter)
We have entered into a relationship with the India Shrine. They have been a part of some of our parades, and they decided to make Stockyard City their, their home for their parades. So, we had told them that we would host the parade and give them the space to do their, their own parade for their fall ceremonial parade. The neat thing about that is that helps us expand our exposure, and we also get to combine our authentic heritage with an organization that we believe in, and working together, we think will not only make lives better, but it'll help kids defy the odds. So we're very proud to have this parade. If you have questions about the parade, the route follows all other parades that we have down there, starting on Penn, going to Agnew, down Exchange, and then on, down to the south side of the district. So, other than that, I'll entertain any questions.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Salia?
Thanks, Todd. I just really encourage everybody to go down on November 17th. There is nothing more fun than seeing a big herd of longhorns running through the streets of Stockyards.
That'll be on the first.
That one's on the first?
Yes, the longhorns, that, that was, it was originally longhorns, and then they couldn't do both events, so.
Got it, well, be there on the first and be there on the 17th.
And the 16th is our Christmas tree lighting, so.
Excellent. It's busy down in the Stockyards. Thanks for all you do. Move approval, please.
All right, we've got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none? Cast your votes. Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Have a great event. All right, we're going to recess the council meeting and convene as the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority. We have items A through E here, and we can take them with one motion.
Move the items.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none? Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. That brings us to, we will now adjourn Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority, convene as the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority, where we have items A through C, and we can take them with one motion.
Move the items.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none? Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. We will adjourn the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority and convene as the Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust, where we have items A through D, which we can take with one motion.
Move that.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none? Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. We will adjourn OCEAT and reconvene as the city council, where we find ourselves on page 5 of your printed agenda, item 7, the consent docket. And I know we have a presentation for A, no, AQ. Anything else, plus a motion?
Move those items subject to individual consideration.
Second. Okay, we've got a motion and a second. Is there anything else that a council member would like to pull out for discussion?
I do.
X. Okay, I'll start with down here. X, he said? X, yes. Anyone else on my right? Nope. Okay.
So, L5, AG, and AC.
What was your first one?
L5.
L5, oh, okay. And I'm sorry, after that?
AG, and AC.
Okay, we'll take them in order, and that means we start with L5. Meg?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to, to mention this. I really appreciate staff working on this. We talked a couple of weeks ago about a citizen's request to light the land-run sculpture that's down along I-40 and back behind Bass Pro. And I was unaware at the time that this is actually a 2007 bond-issue project with a number of landscaping enhancements, some terracing, you know, replacing some stones with buffalo grass, and excellent lighting. It looks like a wonderful plan, and I just want to commend Parks Department particularly for working on this.
Okay, thank you. Moving through the list, I just want to point out that the motion earlier was not for Q2 and 3. Those items were already deferred at the beginning of the meeting, and that brings us now to item X. Councilman Greiner?
Yeah, this is an agreement with the city of Bethany to repave Northwest 16th between Rockwell and Eagle Lane, so it's in Ward 3 and Ward 1. Just want to thank our public works staff for making these agreements, because I know that they're not easy to come up with these agreements between, between cities. I know we've struggled with that in the past, and so thank you to whoever did that within the public works department, and, and thank you to the city of Bethany. I also wanted to point out that these are the sorts of projects there here on Northwest 16th, which is not a major arterial that would have... 16th, which is not a major arterial that would have never happened, at least this quickly, if it weren't for the safer, better street, safer city vote that the citizens voted on. So thank you to the citizens for voting for that. And I think that's all I got. Thanks.
Thank you. And that brings us to AG. Councilwoman Salier, you wanted to mention that.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This is, you know, one of these things that is, I think, so incredibly exciting, and I just want to make sure that anybody watching is aware that on, at 9 o'clock on Tuesday, November 13th, the city council and our Central Oklahoma Transportation and Parking Authority, CACPA, will be meeting in a joint session to talk about regional transit. And this is an effort, and actually, you know, the work of ACOG that's been going on for a number of years. And I'm just not sure people are really aware that along with, you know, discussion of streetcars and rapid bus transit and things that we're discussing for the City of Oklahoma City, we're simultaneously talking about the creation of a regional transit authority and a regional transit network that someday would, you know, we hope facilitate light rail or, and I don't mean to classify what you call it, because people call it different things, but light rail or commuter rail that, you know, might run from Edmund and Norman and from Yukon over to Tinker and allow people to move around. So we have come really far in this effort. We've actually created, with the other five cities that are involved, a trust indenture that would create the authority, and that's what we'll be discussing on Tuesday. It's already been approved by Edmund and Norman. And so it will come to Oklahoma City, I think, to be the final vote amongst the six cities that are the original members of the RTA. It's really exciting.
Great. Thank you, yeah. We'll all be there. Which brings to mind, Councilman Cooper, this may be your last meeting in the council chambers. It is not your last workshop, so we, you're still on the clock on November 13th, but, so we hope you'll join us and invite your successor, the council person-elect. Okay, that brings us to AQ. This is a resolution accepting a project at the MAPS 3 Senior Health and Wellness Center on the south side, and we have a presentation.
Right. This is the final acceptance of Wellness Center Number 2 at Capitol Hill. And John Semper is here this morning from FSB to give us this short presentation.
Thank you. This is definitely a joyous day to come and present. This is always an easy presentation to recommend to accept one of our great projects. I'm here representing a whole team back at FSB that worked on this, our design partner, Moody Nolan, the operator, North Care, the contractor, McNatt, city staff definitely was huge in this, the MAPS office, and all of the MAPS 3 subcommittees and all of the others that helped make this project really a huge success for us. The Senior Wellness Center was forenamed, the Pete White Health and Wellness Center. It is located on Walker, just south of Capitol Hill High School. Throughout the presentation, I'll talk about kind of our design intent, and then show you some pictures of what it actually, the construction ended up looking like. We're very excited about what it did. Here's an overall aerial of the site. You can see some of the main features, the roadway far east against Walker, the building really fronting that side. On the left-hand side of the screen, you can see the tennis courts and the parking lot that we added later. Here's the front of the building, the drive, the entry. You can really see that the renderings and the actuality really captured that. We're really excited about the end product. One of the later additions was this awning to make sure that the seniors that were coming to the center could be protected, and we really were excited about how that turned out. The front, the face of the building, is the aquatics, the pool, the glass there along the sides, brings in a lot of light to the space. One of the key aspects of this is the fact that we have a clinic inside and a pharmacy. So this is actually the secondary entrance for all the clinic patients. One of the more active areas inside the facility is this exercise room. It is busy with different yoga classes and pickleball activities. Definitely a hot area and very busy. But probably the busiest is the pool. It's been a signature of all the senior wellness, and definitely we're really proud of this. Another kind of unique area is our teaching kitchen. So inside, we have a full commercial kitchen. It serves the multipurpose room adjacent, but also has this great teaching area to it, so people can come and learn from chefs there. Similar to the art room, we bring in different, the operator brings in different artists and comes and are really seeing a great class schedule forming in there. This is now the waiting area for the clinic. You can come in, the pharmacy on the left and the clinic on the right, kind of the back hallway area. The operator is set to move in later this year. Just a couple clinic rooms. And then this is the main lobby area. You walk in and there's a quick deli. You can pick up some healthy foods and snacks. We have this club room kind of at the front where people can lounge, right next to the computers and cyber cafe, and then really the front main entry. You can see the left, the kind of the vision of it on the right. You can see the actuality. Really, you know, see that. You can walk in, you can see the running track and the exercise up on the upper levels as well as down on the ground floor. Here is an interior image of the weight and cardio room and that upper track I just referenced with some nice picturesque windows to the back greenbelt behind the facility. No building's complete without some administrative offices and an exciting game room. Total construction came in just north of $11 million. It was dedicated back on May 4th, and enrollment and activity is just increasing every day. Thank you. With that, I'll take any questions.
I just want to commend you and everyone else that was involved in this project. It turned out to be tremendous. So, and if anyone hadn't checked it out yet, I would certainly implore you to go down and give it a look. It's great. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, any other questions for John? All right. Thank you. I'll tell a quick story about this senior center. Last week, I got an email from a gentleman who had read in the paper our discussions about the North Senior Center, and he said, "I want you to know, I'm offended by this. There are seniors in South Oklahoma City, and we don't even have a senior center, and here you are already adding on to the North Side Senior Center." Well, obviously, you know, this was like a softball down the middle for me. So I replied, and I said, "It was my great honor to help cut the ribbon on the South Side Senior Center." Within three hours, he responded to me, and he said that he had gone and, he had no idea it existed. He went over to see it. He was beautiful. He was amazed. He was thrilled. He got all the information. He was going to sign up, and he told his HOA president, who also didn't know about it, and was going to announce it at the next HOA meeting. And it was just a great reminder, and by the way, this was the greatest email I'd ever received. He apologized, and it was wonderful. Usually, usually people ghost after that kind of encounter, but, and I just thought it was a great reminder that we do these great things. We think we've done everything we have, we can to spread the word, but in this case, we missed this gentleman who lived, I guess, a mile from the senior center and didn't even know it existed. So whatever we're working on and that we're proud of, always feel, I just encourage everybody to, don't be shy about it, because there's a lot of people out there who would love these facilities if they knew they existed. Yes, sir?
Mayor, may I interject something? That gentleman is not the only one who is not up to speed on what's going on in the wellness centers. I've had several calls since we announced that we were taking bids on Wellness Center Number 4, saying, "What's going on here? And how are you coming? You're doing this for Wellness Center 4? You're expanding Wellness Center 1, and we don't have one." So we need to get the word out that there are other senior wellness centers on the drawing board, and they all will be completed at due time.
Yeah. Okay. Any other comments on that item? All right. Now we'll go to item AZ. Councilwoman Salier, you wanted to mention that.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, just, you know, falling in the category of areas where we're trying to help our citizens. This is in agreement with the Oklahoma Department of Mental Health and Substance Abuse, to work with the Oklahoma City Police Department, assisting our citizens that are dealing with mental health issues. We've got community impact teams that are working diligently every day to help citizens who need assistance. And I just wanted to appreciate the Department of Mental Health and Substance Abuse for stepping up and being a partner with us, and OCPD.
Great. Thank you. I'll also back up and mention AX and AY on the previous page. These are agreements with the Oklahoma City Family Justice Center, also known as Palomar. I think we're very proud of Oklahoma City for having been a part in birthing that wonderful organization, and I noticed that Tricia Everest is here in the third row, who's been integral to its success. So we're glad to see work there continues. That concludes all the things I had brought to my attention under the consent docket. Is there anything else? Okay, we have a motion and a second for all the items except for the two that were deferred at the beginning of the meeting. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. All right, that brings us to the concurrent docket. We have items A through K, and we can take them with one motion.
Subject to individual consideration.
Got a motion and a second. Is there anything anyone wants to pull out for discussion? Seeing none. Any further discussion on the items? Seeing none. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. That brings us to page 18 on your printed agenda. Items requiring separate votes, item 9. We'll start with A1. So these are all ordinances on final hearing that were recommended from approval from the Planning Commission. A1 is at 807 Northwest 69th Street, moving from R1 to I2. Councilman Shadid.
Did anyone sign up to speak? I move for approval.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item 9A2, at 1630 Northwest 1st Street, moving from R2 to I2. Councilwoman Salier.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. There were no protests at the Planning Commission. This is an area between 1st and Main Street that is mixed use, developing lots of great adaptive reuse going on, but this is very much in conformance with the plans. I would move approval.
All right. We've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. That brings us to 9A3, at 721 Northeast 50th Street, moving from Double A Agriculture in R1 to PUD 1670. And there was a, the Planning Commission approval was subject to a summary of technical evaluation. Councilman Cooper.
Speaker, can you speak on this item?
Members of the council, David Box, 522 Callacore Drive, here on behalf of the CLO. I do have the pleasure this morning of having...
Uninitiated CLO.
Commissioners of the Land Office. They own the property that is here at 50th and Lincoln, bordered also by the highway on the north. This is a PUD that we have spent several years working on, the last, I'd say, 13, 14 months specifically with this gentleman who stands by my right, who's Mr. Eric Groves, who represents a host of concerned citizens. There were somewhere north of 12 separate meetings held. Councilman Cooper, both as a Planning Commission member, and then ultimately as a city councilman, has been heavily involved in this. We always thought it was a positive thing. Each meeting we had, there appeared to be less and less people at the meetings, and we really got down to, towards the end, where we were talking about drainage and traffic. And what we have agreed to do in the PUD document is some of the details of that will be decided at the specific plan stage. That will be the stage where we have more details, and we can actually address when traffic improvements are required, what specific drainage improvements will be required. That will be a public hearing that is held before the Planning Commission. To my right, I would just like to go over just a couple of the pieces of the development. As I mentioned, this was something that we have worked on for a couple of years. At the outset, you can see the intensity of the development is shoved up towards the interstate highway and Lincoln. Originally, that, some of that was south, closest to this residential neighborhood here. So when Mr. Johnson and myself were hired, we sought to redesign this in a manner that was consistent with the residential neighborhood to the south, and increase our density as we moved towards the highway. So the end result was a series of PUD revisions that would force the more intense development to the highway and keep the single-family next to the single-family. I believe the last request made by the neighbors was that the area along the creek, the single-family homes immediately on the other side of the creek, would be a minimum lot size of 10,200 square feet, which we did agree to. And once we made that revision and came up with some more detailed language in the PUD master design statement, I do believe that the people that Eric Groves represents are now satisfied that they have a master design statement that will work for them and that we can perhaps drill down into more details at the specific plan stage. And I do want to just say thank you to Councilman Cooper. It's been an honor working with you, not only your time as Planning Commission member, but also as a city councilman, and I'll certainly miss you. So thank you.
Good morning, Mayor. Members of the council, I represent the Thompson Woodlands Burr Oaks Neighborhood Association. There are several involved, but I have an attorney-client relationship with only that one. I think the key to understanding how we got this far is that in the design statement, we have entered provisions as to what remains to be settled up at the specific plan stage. We have identified a number of things that are not appropriate for exquisite detail in the design statement, but are appropriate at the specific plan stage. These things include landscaping, drainage, access to the project. One of the things that has always concerned us is drainage. We hope to get down to greater detail at the specific plan stage. So we've come a long way, and I'm grateful to everyone who helped us out with this, so... Any questions? Thanks.
Can I ask you a question, Eric?
Yes, Councilman.
So the CLO is a state agency, correct?
It is.
Has a board? Who's on the board of the CLO?
There are five members of the Commissioners of the Land Office, the Governor, the Lieutenant Governor, the State Auditor, the Secretary of Agriculture, and the Superintendent of Instruction.
Okay.
Some of them will not be commissioners very long.
Right. But they'll be replaced by their...
We may have a whole different array. We'll see what happens, but...
But the CLO run by that board of five people owns, will own this real estate?
Well, I mean, David can speak to their plans better than I can, but I think they're going to sell to developers. I mean, they, they own it now, and they're zoning it for development, but who will actually be the developer, David? I don't know that they've selected developers yet. But our object here is to put in place an understanding that will run with the land, and whoever buys it will be bound by those regulations.
Yeah, thank you.
Sure.
Eric, that's actually my question as well, and to Eric and/or David. Can we rely on this plan, given that the developer hasn't been selected yet? And is there a timeline for the development?
Well, it's a zoning ordinance, and it runs with the land. When we get down to the specific plan stage, we'll have even greater details, and David can talk about it, but that's the whole object of the exercise, is to bind the developers to the agreed-upon design. So if a developer comes in and doesn't like it, I mean, he can ask that the PUD be amended, but if it affects our interests, we'll be heard on it, so... David?
It's no different than any other Chisholm Creek. You know, somebody owns it, and they're selling pieces or they're leasing pieces as it develops. That PUD like this one requires a specific plan, so there's been several items at the Planning Commission as each individual development piece of that development have come through. So as Mr. Groves said, the zoning itself runs with the land. Any subsequent developer or purchaser will be subject to these, and prior to any development, will have to go through a specific plan process at the Planning Commission.
David, I have a question. Can you say at this point in time, in terms of how this area will be developed, will it begin at the south with the residential area and then move further north? Will that be the initial development?
At this time, I don't know. What I can tell you is my client has been... What I can tell you is my client has been actively engaged, visiting with various developers. But one of the problems with those conversations is they didn't have the entitlements in place. So, now that the entitlements are in place, they can begin to have real conversations with developers.
This next comment isn't directed towards this specific development, but there is a concern among the council members, maybe not completely, that when we have presentations made to us and we approve them, sometimes they're completed, sometimes they're not. There's beginning to be some efforts to look at how that can be overcome in terms of having a timeline included in the PUD or SPUD as to when development may take place. I'm just mentioning that as a concern...
Sure.
...at this point in time.
I know years ago, it was in vogue for the Council on Planning Commission to put sunset clauses into PUDs. I believe the city attorney's office believes that to be unconstitutional. And so, I mean, this is a concern that is shared by every council that I appear in front of. It's part of the nature of zoning, that it runs with the land and that certainly there are no guarantees, but all you can do is place, you know, like we did here, as many restrictions and regulations as possible.
You're right. No, I understand that. I'm just saying, going forward, you may find it more acceptable by both the Planning Commission and the council if the developer or whomever is coming forward with the plan with the request for change in zoning voluntarily includes some type of timeframe in that.
Sure. You know, one of the problems, to your point, is there are provisions in the comprehensive plan that encourages developers to include, if they own adjacent property, all the adjacent property when they're bringing an application. So, you know, we kind of, we get it from both sides, in that staff is going to want us to put in all the adjacent property that's going to force us to be a more speculative zoning case than otherwise might be the case. But I certainly understand your concern.
Well, and I think, I would just like to add, I really appreciated the communication with the neighborhoods. I thought they brought forward a lot of valid points, and I personally would hope that we don't go out and clear-cut this beautiful acreage until there really is a plan.
Sure. And there's actually, we commit to 40% of the entire site is required to be maintained as open space. So, that was one of the very first concerns, because it is very treed, and so 40% of the site pursuant to the PUD is required to be maintained as open space.
Right. But until we have something happening, I hope it will retain its current nature.
Okay. Any other questions?
Yes. To the point about sunset provisions, there are other cities, Edmund is one of them, where in PUD, PUD design statements, there's a built-in reversion clause, where if the property is not built out within a certain period of time, its zoning reverts back to what it was before the PUD. Mr. Brummett and I have talked about this for many years, about whether or not that complies with our statutes, whether zoning can revert as, by operation of law. Mr. Brummett has always said that you'd have to have a hearing, notice in a hearing, before that reversion could occur. So, I don't think it's a matter of constitutionality so much as it is a matter of compliance with our state statutes. On the 40%, I think the 40% was to protect existing vegetation as much as possible, and that's, that's a good deal. When we get down to the specific plan stage, we're going to talk about which trees and where. Of course, we're most interested in the buffer between the project and the Burr Oaks neighborhood, but 40% is a significant amount of vegetation if we can preserve it. But we need to get down to details about which trees and where, and then we need assurances as to who's going to maintain them, so...
On the issue of the reversionary clause, we've, excuse me, we've researched that. The, it's not per se illegal, but you have to have, let's say you put five years in. At the end of five years, staff would have to monitor that when that expires, and then they would have to give notice and an opportunity for a hearing before council, for council to actually change the zoning. You'd have to go through all the zoning change procedures, and the property owner would have an opportunity to defend why it shouldn't be changed because there hadn't been any change of condition. So, you basically would have to have some change in condition because your initial zoning decision is presumed to be valid. Then you also have the issue of what is going to be sufficient development activity on the property to overcome the five-year limitation? Getting a building permit? Building one structure? Putting into public improvements, et cetera? So, you also have that problem. Other states that do this have statutory schemes that authorize it. Like Arizona, we've looked at, looked at them, and they have an elaborate statutory scheme on that. So, I mean, potentially you can do it, but it does have complications.
Yeah, I agree with all of that. Personally, as a matter of public policy, I favor having that provision, but it may be that statutory changes would have to be made to permit it.
Now, Eric, do you mean statutory change at the state level?
Yes.
Okay.
I mean, I agree with Kenny that it can be done. It's a little cumbersome, a little awkward. The better remedy would be to build, build that into the PUD-enabling legislation at the state level.
Thank you.
And we have a statute that allows PUDs. We could amend that statute to provide for sunset clauses.
Thank you.
So, Eric... Does Edmund, on the reversionary clause, do they have a hearing?
Say again?
Does the city of Edmund have a hearing?
Well, David may know more about it than I do, but, and I've been involved in one or two, and no, they don't. But what often happens is if the project isn't built out, the owner of the project comes before the council and asks that the sunset be extended, which is provided for in their regulatory scheme. It gets interesting when the developer doesn't ask that it be extended, and then by operation of law, it's expired, and we've had some arguments over that.
Yeah, so what Edmund does is they require you to come extended, but the position that the city attorney takes is that if you fail to extend it, your zoning doesn't lapse because of the reasons that Mr. Jordan said. Zoning requires notice and opportunity to be heard. So, there are several in Edmund that have technically expired pursuant to the way that the ordinance, but the city attorney's position is they can't enforce that because it would violate the state statutes with the opportunity to be heard, so...
Yeah, the case law is uniform, that you have to give notice and opportunity to be heard before the zoning can change back.
Is, one final question, if I may. What if the developer voluntarily puts a sunset clause in the PUD or SPUD? Can that occur? And does it, can it be enforced?
I don't, I don't think so, because the, you know, the developer could agree to it and sell it. The zoning runs with the land. Somebody else might own it, and the same problem is there in that there wasn't a hearing, notice, and opportunity to be heard.
Okay. Thank you.
You know, I love all this free legal advice.
It's an important public policy decision. The reason some cities do this is because things change over time, and this PUD may look good today, but not so good 10 years from now if it's just sitting there and not developed.
So, Eric, to that point, or to Meg's point earlier, is there anything stopping them from leveling 60% of the vegetation?
Yes, the design statement.
The design statement would stop that. You couldn't just do...
I hope so. But we're, but we're, we're not through because we have to get to the specific plan stage where we say, okay, which trees are you going to keep? And then, that's binding on them. It's an ordinance.
Okay, so what we're doing today wouldn't give the ability for that to happen?
I hope not. Am I right, Mr. Box?
The, the PUD requires, you know, somebody today could go plow through any tree in the city. This actually puts more regulations than, than the site has now. So, the city of Oklahoma City does not have some sort of ordinance prohibiting people from removing trees. This actually puts more burdens on the property than otherwise exists today.
Yes, that's correct. This is a negotiated deal. I mean, but it will be part of the ordinance. Every PUD is an ordinance. When we get down to details and say, here's the trees we're going to keep, it will be an ordinance and will be enforceable by the city.
Okay.
Okay?
Any further questions?
Any others to be heard? We have come a long way on...
Councilman Cooper, actually, I think someone's raised their hand to speak.
Did anyone else sign up?
Sir, if you wouldn't mind stating your name and address.
Yes, thank you. I didn't get a chance to sign up. Zedman Warrior Jr. My address is 5712 North Lottie Avenue. And I just would like to speak this particular plan, unit developments above, that's in front of the council right now, with this. But first of all, I'd like to thank the city manager for his service that he's had for this last 20 years. I've watched you from, from far, that you've gone through this, and I didn't realize you made so much money. But, but I, but I must say, you're, you're well worth it. I know you're on call 24/7, and a lot of different things have been occurring throughout the years. It makes a really big deal with this. I'm born and raised here in Oklahoma City. It's really pleasant to see so many cranes around this area, this being all this new building that we have, and it's just a really a renaissance that's occurring within our central core area there with that. So, thank you for your service. Happy for that. And if you do get a chance to go back to Casper, Wyoming, say hello to the folks up there. I do know a few people that are from Casper, Wyoming, that have come here to make this their particular home. I even have a cousin that went to Wyoming College, the Cowboys, and played football there, and is now is back in the, in the city area. So, thank you a lot for that. But, you know, look at this particular area here. I, I'm, I'm close to this particular, this particular area, this particular development, which is just east of the particular development we have with this. And I did kind of go through and look at, I kind of went through the ODOT, Department of Transportation, and got this, this particular type of map that shows the, and I was interested in the elevation of this particular type of property and what it looks like and how there's going to be with, with it, so that's why I picked this up with it. But within this Section 10, there's, there's quite a, quite a bit of area that's, has been developed, or some that, that needs to have some developing that's, that is occurring. And I think this 134 acres is, has come to the time where it is looking for some type of development to occur with this. Since nothing has ever been done on this property for years and years and years, and I know it has belonged to the Edwards family for a number of years until eventually did, was property that was with the CLO that you have for that. But looking at the mission statement of the current owner right now, is their goal is, this site should, this goal, the goal for this site should contribute to the well-being of Oklahoma through financial returns to CLO and economic revitalization of the public assets. And I really believe that this is going to be something that's going to be revitalized, the particular area, if it is developed as it's, as it's being planned, through this planned unit development. So, I think the, the goals have been really met. It's going to be a very, very good asset to the state of Oklahoma because of its specific, of its specific location. This is a very, very ideal location, is where the center core of the area that has long been overdue for development. It's only two minutes away from the state capitol. It's only five minutes away from right here, have with this. So, this is a really big developer, I think, and Lincoln Boulevard development has been well overdue for some, for some development that's been occurring over the particular time. Because those buildings have been torn down for 20-plus years down their close 28th Street. The nice green space looks nice, but it will be, will be, I think, nice to have that development that is occurring just there north of the state capitol, have for that. Of course, there is some things that's going to be coming from the state council, city council, concerning the south part of Lincoln Boulevard that's going to be discussed with this. So, I know there's some things that'll be, be coming with that development, particularly south of 4th Street, between Lincoln Boulevard and Washington Park. That's, some things are going to be developed and going with that. So, you know, hopefully we'll get some things working with the north side, and then eventually we'll get some of that development completed on the south side of Boulevard and make this a very, very fine, fine development to have with this, have with this. I do think that it's, has followed the guidelines of the Plan OKC. I guess that's an example of the master plan that was once discussed when I first heard about it back in the 60s. Probably that is, is called the Plan OKC, and those guidelines have been written with that for the particular area. Do have some kind of questions about the density discussed with that particular area. When I look at density, when I hear about density, I think about, about non-living objects, such as density equals mass divided by volume, but this, of course, is talking about some human lives, what's particular area have for this. So, those are some things I think are, are in place that's working with this particular development. I don't think, I would like the Plan OKC to, as a, as a look at these various types of developments in this, in this urban area, that sometimes, that some areas may be listed or they may consider to be a distressed type of neighborhoods, but however, sometimes within those distressed neighborhoods, there are some, some diamonds in those, in the rough areas with that. So, I hope that will be taken consideration as the Planning Commission does make their recommendations and pass things on to the city council for the final, final individual vote for that.
Mr. Warrior?
Yes.
Can we limit, you know, everything to this particular project so we can kind of move through this?
Okay, yeah, sure, sure. I just, just some things I just were kind of bringing up because the Planning Commission, it was a step that was involved till we got to the individual point for that, for that. But I, I do feel, I would like to thank the owners of particular property for making the recommendation during the Planning Commission's site that there would be a public notice for, 300-foot public notice for anything that's being, that's going to be developed during the specific design and before the building permits are going through this, as it worked through this particular area. But I do, from what I have seen, this particular development they have with that, I can, can be supportive of the, of what I think that the, that the owners of the property, the secretary of the CLO, is going to put forth in this particular development, therefore that I do feel that they are, he does want to make sure this is a, is a, is done correctly and done a, a very positive, positive change and actually improvement for this particular land and for the particular area for that. But thank you a lot for the time.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Warrior. Mr. Warrior has been instrumental in this process and trying to help us to get to where we are. As Planning Commissioner, we kind of worked through and knew about some considerations as it related to this property. When I became city councilman, then all of my time has been spent trying to get this project particularly to this place. And I've shared with all of the residents that you had the very best in Oklahoma City working on your behalf on both ends, and really made this happen. Very difficult process because it had so many intricate details that needed to really be thought about and addressed, and because of that, I appreciate everybody who has worked to get this to this place. What I did not appreciate was the fact that some act as, as though I was not aware or that I'd had no right to actually make decisions in this seat. But that being said, I'm excited about getting to a place where this project can go forward and be recommended today, and because of that, I so move gladly.
All right. We've got a motion and a second. And, you know, it's interesting, this issue's been brought to my attention almost as long as I've been mayor, and to see Eric and David standing next to each other really validates that the process works, you know? And that's what I kind of told people throughout that time. And the city manager's getting so wistful, he took a picture of you two standing there next to each other, so... Is there any other discussion? We've got a motion and a second. Okay. Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay. 9B1 and 2 are related. 9B2 is an ordinance on final hearing that was recommended for approval at 201 and 203 Northeast 50th Street from I2 to PUD 1695. B1 is an amendment to the master design statement to eliminate the sidewalk on North Walnut Avenue. Councilman Cooper.
Are there any to speak on the subject?
Once again, David Box, here on behalf of Pivot. This is a wonderful project for Pivot to allow young people to be involved in building tiny... tiny homes and being able to still live on this campus and still receive the services they need. I am perhaps not the best person to speak to that, but I do think it's worth the opportunity for Kami Kirkendall to come up here, and for those who don't know what Pivot is, explain briefly and then explain their vision for this project. It is worth noting, planning commission was very enthusiastic in their unanimous recommendation for approval, and we had widespread support from staff, planning commission, and really anybody that we've talked to on this project. So it's an exciting opportunity, and I'll turn it over.
Mr. Mayor, council members, thank you for the opportunity to address you today. We're very excited to be here. Pivot, we are truly a turning point for youth, and that's our logo, our tagline, and that's our mission. We have services that help young people that have really grown up in unstable situations, that haven't had the support. Many, if not most of them, have suffered long-term complex trauma and have really struggled to develop the needed life skills to live on their own and be a successful contributing member of our community as an adult. So that's our goal, is to take young people and teenagers and transform them into productive, tax-paying, successful citizens to be a part of the Oklahoma City area. The thing that we're missing is affordable housing for our young people, and a lot of our families, as you know, struggle with poverty and living in poverty. So for a young person to access adequate affordable housing on their own is very, very difficult. And so we have young people that often are just on their own, don't have that support, and it's very difficult for them to secure even apartment leases. So this project will allow us to house additional young people each year, to give them a place, a safety net to live. Our goal is, you talked about trees earlier, our goal is to create a very welcoming neighborhood environment so that they learn how to be a good neighbor, they learn how to live in a community and contribute to a community. They also have a safety net of 24-hour services. We have staff on-site 24 hours a day, 365 a year, and so they always have access if a crisis occurs, they need that additional support. So it gives them a chance to learn how to live as a productive citizen while in our care and providing those services, helping them overcome the impact of trauma, and then helping them go on and learn those really vital life skills that they miss out on many times. Happy to entertain any questions you have about the project.
Okay. Any questions? I just have commendation, just not only for the services that you are already providing, but then the step that you're making today, which is really to help young people in transition and to move into adulthood, and surrounding them and wrapping them in services where they can make good, sound decisions and become productive citizens. It's just amazing, the idea that you all have and the plan that you have come up with. And so I support it wholeheartedly and move for adoption.
I would second that, and I just also would like to say, I really am hopeful that this becomes a model project. We've got lots of other issues to face head-on in other parts of the community, and I think this could really set a great example for what we might do in other parts of the community. So thanks for being so creative.
Absolutely. Thank you so much.
All right. Did we have a motion in a second? And this would be probably on item one, then, B1, the amendment. Yeah, so we'll take that first. So I've got a motion in a second on B1, 9B1. Any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. And then a second motion would be in order for 9B2.
I so move.
Got a motion in a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Thank you. That brings us to 9C1 and 2. And I think we're planning, the companies in question here in regards to scooter sharing have hired counsel to kind of help all of us work through this issue of revocable permits being included in the proposed ordinance. I see two people have signed up to speak, but are you comfortable if we simply defer? Okay, all right. So I think we have a motion for that.
Sure. The one thing I would say, and I think it's important to emphasize, is that this is an out-of-state company that had some questions about Oklahoma law, but I want everybody to remember that staff has done an incredible job on putting together an incredible ordinance. And I was talking to Mayor Ron Norick yesterday, and he gave me a great bit of advice, and that was, when I tried to get something passed, I always tried to move everybody to the middle. And I think in this instance, where the company's a little confused about Oklahoma law and wants some guidance, the best thing we can do is give them a couple of weeks and continue to talk and try to work something out. So I'd move to defer for two weeks.
Okay, got a motion in a second. Any discussion on the motion for deferral of items 9C1 and 2? Seeing no discussion, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. That brings us to 9D1 and 2. 9D2 is an ordinance on final hearing. We've actually had three previous meetings where this was considered. It was deferred at the last meeting due to absences. It was relating to miscellaneous provisions and offenses in Chapter 30 of the Oklahoma City Municipal Code regarding adult novelties. At the last meeting, it was discussed that Councilman Greiner would bring forward the amendment at D1, that is, to an amendment to Section 3410, certain displays visible to the public prohibited, and Eric Groves has signed up to speak. So maybe we'll start with Eric, and then we'll consider the amendment.
Mayor, members of the council, I'm here to answer any questions you may have about the ordinance and the proposed amendment, which we'll call the Greiner Amendment. We favor it, and we just ask that the ordinance be enacted as presently presented. Other lawyers are here representing other stores, if anyone has any questions.
Okay. Councilman Greiner?
Yeah, the amendment, it just, it adds an intention to what that section was talking about, and that intention is to protect children from exposure. And I think that it's, what Kenny wrote is clearer and more specific than what it was to what actually is prohibited from displaying now. So, yeah, that's all I really had to say about it.
Would you like to move it?
Yeah.
Okay, we've got a motion. Got a second. Any discussion on the amendment? Okay, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Now we're back on the ordinance as amended. Is there any discussion on that?
Eric, you still have state law, which basically said the exact same thing as what this was before. So is the hope just that the city won't prosecute and hoping that the state?
Well, a couple of things about the state statute, it is not exactly the same, has the same thrust, but it's not exactly the same. And it does have a spacing requirement in it. We have the same problems with that statute as we had with this ordinance. But the city is not customarily in the business of enforcing state statute spacing requirements. So we're dealing with it at the local level with the ordinance, which is what the city would enforce. That statute's going to remain there. If it were to be violated, the appropriate authority would be the district attorney for Oklahoma County, if he wanted to prosecute a violation of that spacing agreement. And we're hopeful nothing like that will happen, but that law, that statute will remain on the books. I don't view it as a statute that's going to be enforced by the city.
I guess just me personally, I view it as a missed opportunity. It's still arbitrary and capricious. It's like trying to become a little less pregnant. We're making this a little less unconstitutional. It's still unconstitutional. It's still arbitrary and capricious. I think, you know, the state statute is still, so this would have been the opportunity to challenge it, of course. Now, I'm not paying the attorney fees, so I don't get to...
And that's the point, you see. We're satisfied with this compromise because we can keep doing business. I mean, my clients and the clients of these other lawyers are in business, and they would rather spend their resources on other things than litigation. The only way that state statute can be dealt with, perhaps, is litigation, but we don't want to go through that. My clients don't want to pay lawyers to do this. Plus, if a litigation took a particular form, the city would be exposed for legal fees. So we regard this compromise as something that's workable and in the best interest of everyone. The state statute will have to wait for another day.
So I understand you, as a private entity, you make a business decision not to challenge it, which I think you would absolutely win if you did challenge it, but I understand that the business...
I think so, too.
But we, as a city, are making policy, and I believe we should have rescinded it when we had the opportunity months ago, and we wouldn't be in this situation. We still are, we still have something that's unconstitutional, maybe a little bit less, but it's still vague, arbitrary, and capricious. It reminds me of a child that's whining, that's told has to take a bath, and so they get in the bath with all their clothes on, and they're soiled underwear and socks and shoes. Yes, they took a bath, but they're not clean. Yes, this is a little less unconstitutional, but it's not constitutional. And so as a policy, it doesn't make any sense to me, that the idea that if you take all these objects, which stimulate human genitals, which, whatever that means, and you put them in 1,000 square feet, that that's okay, but if you put them in 1,500 square feet, that wouldn't be okay. It's a completely arbitrary number. It's completely just pulled out of a hat, for no other reason other than it makes the litigation go away. It serves no public purpose. It has no empirical data or justification to use that number. And that's just, to me, bad policymaking.
Making litigation go away does serve the public interest, Councilman, I think. Remember, the city is exposed here. You know, the litigants have to front the money to litigate the matter, but if we prevail and the city loses, the city pays.
Eric, if you rescind the ordinance, all that goes away also. That's a wash. That's not a reason. You rescind the ordinance, and that argument that you just made goes away.
This is a business decision for us, and we urge the council to enact the ordinance as it is drafted. That's where we stand.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Don't believe we have a motion on the table regarding the ordinance. Got a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes, ooh, 1, 2, 3, 4. The vote is 5 to 3. Is that enough?
Five.
Five's good for this? All right. Passes 5 to 3.
Thank you for your time on this matter, folks.
Okay, that brings us to page 20, 9E. This is an ordinance on final hearing. This is the third of three meetings this has appeared. This is related to the streetcar. We've had previous presentations on this. I would entertain a motion. Got a motion in a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes, 1, 2, 3, 4, 7 to 1. Mark your not... Oh. Mark your not lit up. All right. I re-declare the vote, 8 to nothing, 9 to nothing, sorry, unanimous. Okay, 9F, ordinances on final hearing. These come from the Traffic Commission. We have 9F1, removing metered parking on the north side of Northwest Fifth between Broadway and Robinson. Councilwoman Salier? Got a motion in a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. 9F2, removing the Thursday through Sunday, 3:00 p.m. to 3:00 a.m. open carriage stand at approximately Norick and Robinson. Councilwoman Salier? Got a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. And then we have 9G. This is an ordinance relating to alcoholic beverages and low-point beer. There was a presentation at our last meeting by Chief City on this. This brings us into compliance with new state laws. This is the second of three meetings where we will consider this ordinance change, and at the second meeting, we have a public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to speak on this item? Seeing none, we'll move on, and that will be considered for a final vote at the next meeting, next regular meeting, I should say. We have quite a few coming up. We've got, now we turn to 9H. This is also the second of three meetings. This is a public hearing regarding ordinance related to businesses and general schedule of fees. Eric Winger gave a presentation on this at our last meeting. We would consider this on final passage at our next regular meeting. Today is merely a public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to speak on this item, 9H? Okay. This brings us to 9I. This is a public hearing regarding ordinance, amending ordinance number 25,886 by amending the description of the project for the Downtown MAPS Economic Development Project Plan, et cetera. This is the, basically, the third time this item in some form has appeared before the council in recent weeks, and I believe we have a presentation today.
Good morning. Kathy O'Connor with the Alliance for Economic Development. We have a brief presentation to go over where we are with the amendment, the proposed amendment to the Downtown MAPS Economic Development Project Plan, or the Downtown TIF District, to support the American Indian Cultural Center and the surrounding commercial development. This is just a timeline of the actions that have taken place over the last 20-plus years to implement this project. I think you all are aware of the most recent history, so we don't necessarily need to really go into this. In September, the state did issue $25 million in bonds to begin the construction again on the center, and in 2019, the construction is scheduled to start back up. So the purpose of the amendment to the TIF project plan is to provide incentives to help position the AICCM to become the symbolic and destination heart of American Indian country. They plan to create a critical mass of offerings that support the unique American Indian history and character in Oklahoma with active and inviting experiences. This is a site plan, just an illustrative site plan that shows some of the kinds of proposed development. They do plan a variety of commercial investment in the area, both on the west side of Eastern and on the east side of Eastern. So the request is to amend the Downtown TIF District to create actually three different increment districts. The first one will be west of Eastern, within the existing project area of the Downtown TIF District. They plan to create a new ad valorem district, which will be called, we're going to call it Increment District A in the documents that amend the plan that were included in your packet. And then the sales tax increment district will be District Number 14. That district will be implemented as soon as the ordinance is approved by city council in several weeks. And the purpose of that is so that the projects can access the state leverage matching funds to assist with the project because of the significant potential benefits to the state from the project. On the east side of the property, they do plan to implement another ad valorem increment, ad valorem and sales tax increment district that in the project plan is identified as Increment District B. So the key elements of the proposed plan is that the Chickasaw Nation has made possible the completion of the AICCM, preserved the possibility of generating destination development in the area. So they plan on two phases of development on the undeveloped property around the Cultural Center. The first phase is on the east side of the, on the east side of Eastern. The key objectives are to, is to open concurrently with the opening, the reopening of the AICCM, and to commit cash flow sharing to subsidize the AICCM operating deficits, generate new net revenues to the city and the state. And then Phase 2 is on the west side of the AICCM. So the east side will be developed first, and then the west side. Phase 1 has a potential development, private investment of about $400 million over 10 to 15 years. Phase 2, which again is on the west side of the project, is probably the more challenging area of that parcel, is an additional $200 million. And then Increment District B, which is the, again, the ad valorem piece of this, is $150 million. Let me get rid of my notes real quick. On the public investment side, the public investment numbers here that are represented are the amendments to the TIF budget that are in the project plan, so that the TIF, the public investment that can be allocated to these projects for Phase 1 are $85 million, and for Phase 2, $43 million. Increment B is the ad valorem and sales tax from the west side of Eastern is another $22 million. So a total of $150 million that could be allocated to projects through the amendment to the project plan. This is just in where the project is located. I think we're all fairly familiar with that. These are the boundaries of the proposed Increment District Number 14. Again, that's the sales tax piece, and the Increment District A, which is the ad valorem piece. And then on the other side of Eastern, this is Increment And then on the other side of Eastern, this is Increment District B, which is a sales tax and ad valorem Increment District. So these are just some of the economic benefits that are associated with the project. And every time that we amend a TIF district or create a new one, we have to do an analysis of economic impact and the benefits. So depending on the size and the scope of the project, for full build-out, construction impacts of about $396 million. Overnight visitors are expected to be about 234,000, about 900 full-time jobs, and so the fiscal impacts are about $286 million annually. The gross direct spending from those visitors and from the economic activity generated by the project are about $164 million annually. And then this also summarizes what we anticipate the annual increments to be, of 2.6 million and 3.2 million for the project. So this is, as the mayor mentioned, this has been through several different public hearings. This is the, one of those public hearings, so the city council hearing today. There'll be another hearing on November 20th. It will go to the Planning Commission for consideration later this week on November 8th, and as you know, the TIF Review Committee has already recommended approval. Future projects will be brought forward to the city council and through the Economic Development Trust for approval, just as our regular process with all the other Downtown MAPS projects. Any questions?
So Kathy, does that mean that we have control, the council has control over the various projects?
Yes, you will. So just like with the Downtown TIF District, each project will go back to the TIF Review Committee to approve an allocation for the project, and then it will go to the, and then that allocation approval goes to city council, and then we enter into an economic development agreement, and that goes to the Economic Development Trust, and then comes back to city council. So there's several steps in the process for each project.
Only if it's deemed to use economic incentives in it. If they choose not to, then we don't.
Right.
Right. So that was going to be my follow-on. Only on those projects where incentives were requested.
Right. And the other thing I should point out is the ad valorem components of this, ad valorem Increment District A and B, the clock will be started on those at some point in the future, and that item will also come to you all for approval. So there's going to be several different steps that we'll be bringing back to city council as this thing evolves.
So if I understand what you're saying, you're saying that the potential private investment is 600 million, and the budget for the TIF is 150 million. It's a fairly tightly confined space, unlike the Downtown TIF where you could have, so there's only so much development you can do in that area.
Right.
So that's 25%. The budget of the TIF would be 25% of the...
No, I think the private investment number is closer to 750 million. So it's 400 million for Phase One.
Okay.
And Phase Two, which are Increment Districts 14 and Increment District A, then Phase, Increment District B is an additional 150 million in private investment. So the total private investment number is 750 million.
Okay.
It's about a five to one, which is what we typically see.
That was my question, is, so 20%, is that typical with other TIFs that are...
That's typically how we budget.
Is about 20%?
Yeah.
And of that 150 million, for the public side, how much of that would be sales tax? I mean, how, what would be the difference if you only did ad valorem and eliminated the sales tax component? I know it's a estimate.
We, I don't think we know that yet because we don't know the specific projects yet.
Right. So you wouldn't know what sales taxes are generating?
Right. So the budget for Increment District 14 and Increment District A is 85 plus 43 million.
So would we still have the opportunity to, you could eliminate the sales, you don't necessarily have to do the sales tax component on each project. You'd still have that option?
You do not have to do it on each project, and in fact, because of the limitations with the Leverage Act, it will only be projects that are initiated within the next year or so.
Okay.
So it's a very limited timeframe on the piece that would be Leverage Act, sales tax-supported increment projects.
What constitutes initiation in the next year? Like just...
I think they have to begin construction by the end of 2019.
Pretty soon.
Yeah, so it's pretty soon.
Councilman, like all sales tax projects, we always come back and do those individual analyses. That's, you know, spend a lot of time doing that. We've really only done a handful of sales tax incentives in the past, and I would anticipate we would look at this one pretty closely.
Yeah, thank you. But Kathy, this is an upper limit. We wouldn't contribute more in public funds, more than 150. Is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
Okay.
And it's, you know, it's all based on the amount of investment that actually occurs, so you can only...
Twenty percent of whatever private investment comes in. Okay.
Kathy, question on the sales tax?
Sure.
If nobody were to buy anything in the taxing area, then there would be no money that would exchange hands. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Any other questions for Kathy? Okay. I definitely want to give the public opportunity. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak on this topic? Please come forward. If you wouldn't mind stating your name and address, and try to limit your remarks as much as possible.
My name is Don Wilson. I live at 6401 South Country Club Drive in South Oklahoma City. According to an article in the Oklahoma, dated November 3rd, said the city had conveyed the land around the museum to AICCM Land Development, an entity of the Chickasaw Nation, for commercial development. How many acres of land were conveyed to AICCM, and what was the approximate value of the land when it was conveyed?
That information is very ascertainable. I don't know if I have it on top of my head.
Are there a series of questions? Because we could get you with someone to visit privately.
According to another newspaper article, the city, Oklahoma City, has contributed $9 million. The state issued bonds providing $25 million. This city council is asking for $128 million plus $22 million to develop an additional tract nearby. This adds up to $184 million in taxpayer funding being added to the 88 million that's already been spent on this project, not counting the 31 million in private funding. Since we've already given the Chickasaw Nation millions of dollars worth of land, right? Mr. Ford, Mr.?
If I could address that. Yeah. The city did commit, or commit because the state legislature passed legislation requiring us to put $9 million in if we were to go forward with this project. So the city is putting $9 million into the completion of the project. And then we entered into an agreement with Chickasaw Nation, in which they are providing 14, $14 million for operational dollars over the next several years as we begin operation of it. So they will be giving $14 million back to the city on operational, and I don't know the exact value of the land that was transferred to them, but it is well, well under that $14 million. It's a couple of million dollars worth of property value which was given to the Chickasaws in exchange for that $14 million commitment.
Now, Mr. Hall wants $100 million for his property, pretty close, just across the way. I'm not saying that this property on the south side of the river is worth this $100 million that they want over here for the, that Red Hall wants for his property. Point I'm trying to make is, since we've already...
What property are you speaking of?
David, I think the convention center, the old convention.
Oh, that was years ago, but yeah, yeah, okay. And he doesn't own that, he doesn't have a majority interest in that property anyways, but, okay, I'm with you.
Okay. Since we've already given the Chickasaw Nation millions of dollars worth of land around the museum, my recommendation is to sell the museum as it is to the Chickasaw Nation and let them develop the land according to urban renewal standards without investing any more tax dollars in this project. When you think about $184 million being added to 88 million that's already been invested in this thing, it has never flown. It's always been a plague to the city. Why do we want to put, you know, $250 million in a project instead of putting it in parking over here with our new convention center? I've never seen it, I've never seen one single article about parking on our, for our 200 or $168 million convention center.
We do have a parking garage. Do you want to tell a little bit about that?
Right. We've, it hadn't been covered. There were several articles about that at the time when we acquired the property for it. We're in the process of, we've selected architects, and we will be building a parking garage for the convention center that is immediately south of Chesapeake Arena, immediately to the east of the Omni Hotel.
Okay. I talked to the mayor about this parking garage, the way that the Boulevard Place apartments are supposed to be using 40% of that, and then the Omni is going to get 600 parking spaces.
No.
That's what the paper said, was they're going to have 600. They were going to get...
They have 600 keys or rooms, and they have a desire for parking of 100, 230 parking spaces.
Okay. What I read in the paper was they were going to have like almost half of that garage, and then the Boulevard is going to have about 40%. They have 400, 242 apartments, and you have everybody with two cars, you're having 400 cars.
Yeah. Nobody, it is not designed for two cars for apartment, and there's different times that, you know, the times when the convention center is in use, the apartment, the garage may not have the cars from the apartment in it. There's generally overlap in parking in most multi-use functions. That's one of the purposes of having multifunctional uses using a parking garage, because an event at the Cox Center may not be doing, or at the Chesapeake Arena may not be, at the same time there's an event at the convention center.
Right. But I would recommend that you just, there is a good Indian convention, I mean, at Sulfur, Oklahoma. All of us know, I've met, I've been there. It's a nice museum, and I would like to see the Chickasaw Nation take this building and do whatever, develop around it, but without this $184 million of taxpayer money behind all this. So thank you for your time.
Thank you for your time. Thanks for coming down. Okay. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in the public hearing portion under item 9I? Okay, seeing none. This will be on our council agenda at the next regular meeting. Item 9J1, this is regarding dilapidated structures. There's items A through F. Is there anyone who wishes to speak under this public hearing? Seeing none. I would entertain a motion for 9J2, the resolution declaring that the structures are dilapidated. Got a motion in a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. 9K1, this is a public hearing regarding unsecured structures, and it looks like this, of course, would be minus D, E, and J that were deferred at the beginning of the meeting. It looks like we do have someone who has signed up to speak for a few of these items, David Box.
Once again, David Box, 522 Call Core Drive. If the council will recall, these were items that were on your docket, I believe, back in August. They were deferred till this meeting, and I do have a few people that...
G and H you're referring to, under this item. G and H, right?
Yes, sir. I do have a few people here that I'd like to have speak, if you would be so inclined. Catherine Montgomery, who is the architect hired on this project that specializes in historic projects, as well as my client, Cindy Morello, who can talk to the efforts that they make on a daily basis and the money that they're spending on a weekly basis to secure this structure. It is a difficult project to secure. The funds that we're going to be utilizing are wrapped up with historic tax credits, and so we're pushing as fast as we can, but sometimes things like this sit on desks of people that we can't force to sign. But if the council would indulge, I would like both Ms. Morello and Ms. Montgomery to speak briefly on the efforts that are being made to bring this wonderful building back to life.
Catherine Montgomery, President of the Preservation and Design Studio. We're architects, interior designers, and historic preservation specialists located in Oklahoma City. We have been involved with this project for about three to four years. It began with the hotel when we were approached by our client to pursue a National Register nomination for the Lincoln Plaza Inn. At that time, they owned that property and the property to the south, which is being used for the health, Health Authority, and they wanted to redevelop that property. So we pursued the National Register nomination. It turned into a district National Register nomination because all of these properties are functionally related. They were developed as one giant development back in the late '60s and early '70s, and a few, about a year or two after, we were successful at putting the entire district on the National Register, the office buildings came up for sale receivership, and our client was fortunate to be able to bid on that property and become owners of that. So now the entire tax credit project includes redevelopment of the historic hotel, multi-story hotel as apartments, and the two office buildings to the north as office buildings. So we're currently working, we have submitted the Part One tax credit applications for historic preservation tax credits, and we have submitted the Part Twos. We have some, they've been reviewed at the State Historic Preservation Office. We have some revisions to make, which we're hopeful those will be completed this week, and the project will be forwarded to the National Park Service for their review. Their review will take 30 to 45 days, and hopefully after the first of the year, we will have secured their approval, which will also help secure the financing. Any questions?
What has been done since August on this project?
Good morning. Cindy Morello, Gardner-Tannenbaum Holdings, 211 North Robinson, Suite 1950. Thank you for your time this morning, council. This has been a project underway for about three years now, a little over three years in the making. The developer, Richard Tannenbaum, is in the process of developing this into 113 apartment homes and two office buildings. With the nature of this project, it is a lengthy process. So we have gone through the application with SHIPPO and with the National Park Service, and as Catherine Montgomery mentioned, we did receive designation on the National Register in December of 2016. So with respect to your question, Councilman Cooper, we have a kind of a daily fight with vandals and criminals that are breaking into this building. We do have an onsite superintendent that works with our organization who boards up windows daily. We also have an onsite security company that we schedule, that works nightly. So the schedule varies from 12:00 a.m. to about 6:00 a.m. in the morning, you know, when daylight breaks, and the issue is, is the project is quite large, and so when people break into the building, the security company goes in one side and comes out the other side. So we also have worked with the police department on this, and so whenever there are issues, they were quick to respond. It's just a matter of, we just can't get to the criminals quick enough. So I will say that the pictures that were shown today, these are at various stages. We are, we will continue and are willing to continue to board up the windows as they become broken. This is a $43 million project right now that we are securing and financing for. One of the aspects of this is that the historic aspect is, we are trying to secure the windows specifically in the office building, and so with boarding those windows up, we have to be very cautious in the way that we board those windows up. So it's, this project can't happen quick enough. I can tell you that from a cost perspective and from a development perspective for the city. Again, I'd just like to say that we will continue our efforts to monitor the progress of our security company, and we will in-house continue to board the windows up. We are on track to start the project. If all finance, the financial gods and the SHIPPO office and his... If all finance, the financial gods and the, and the SHPO office and historic office approvals are in place, we, or we get approval, we will start the project for the end of the first quarter. Any questions?
I'm kind of hoping that I hit the lottery too. But this question is for staff. I know we have met at the property and what is currently happening with a plan for making sure that there's ongoing security at the site and improvements that are needed. Can you talk a little bit about where we are with that and what's been going on?
To my knowledge, the pictures where we took on the 30th was still in violation. We haven't noticed a whole lot of activity out there.
So, what can be done at this point would be staff's recommendation?
To leave it on. And then we can work with them so that we can be more contentant to what's going on at the property.
Okay. And we can make ourselves available to meet with staff at any point in time, just to kind of monitor the progress as well. We're definitely open to that. Again, I'll state that, you know, this project is on, you know, target to start first, the end of the first quarter of the year. And if any of you are familiar with Mr. Tannenbaum's work in the city, strong, strong history of multifamily, beautiful multifamily properties, great representation of office buildings here in our city. So, you know, we definitely want this to be a landmark project in our city. We're very excited to see this move forward. So, I can leave my contact details with staff today. And we're happy to personally go out there and meet when requested.
So, what are we being asked to do, to defer it again?
No, we'd like to leave it on.
Right. But I guess his question is for David. What are you asking us to do today, David?
Well, I think it's worth noting, when this first came on in August, I asked for an onsite meeting with staff to try to come up with a plan and was not granted that opportunity. We've asked for that opportunity for months. We're spending significant money on a monthly basis to go secure it and pick the fence up every time, fix the windows. We'd like staff to work with us to come up with a plan. I mean, all that you're going to do through your action, if you declare it, I guess, unsecured, is then, on top of the money we're spending, the city's going to then spend money to secure it. So, perhaps it's better off having my client spend the money to secure it in a manner that your staff deems appropriate.
Well, David, we won't spend any money to secure it if the client is spending the money to secure it, so.
You will initially, and then you'll put a lien on the property.
Well, we won't have to if it's secured by the client, so.
And that's what I'm asking, is for staff to be willing to meet us onsite and come up with a plan. But I did ask for that back in August and was told it needs to go on council.
That would be correct. Danny Bumpus, Code Enforcement. We did have conversations. And Mr. Box was told that it should be presented here if their desire was to secure the buildings in a fashion that was anything less than every floor, every opening. Otherwise, it is technically unsecured if other floors, other openings higher on the buildings. That if that was their desire, that they should present to the council and that it would be council's decision at what level the securing was sufficient for the time period that they were requesting to start this project. Currently, they have secured some items on bottom floors, bottom, second story up. They have worked on the fence, although, as they allude, it is a daily, it is a daily battle. We understand that. But it is my office's position that if the building is to remain partially unsecured, although they are high up, that would be a decision by this council to make, not by myself.
Can you meet with the landowners this week out at the site? Do you have the availability to do that?
Sure. Sure. We can do that, Councilman.
I'd ask that we defer this to the next council meeting. You could come back and report to us if you guys could come up with some type of agreement. And then also, I'd like some numbers on what you're spending out there currently.
Okay. Absolutely. So, between our security that we hire nightly and building materials, it's anywhere in the range of, on a small site, $4,000 a month to upwards of $6,000 a month. So, there is a concerted effort to, to do this. It would be totally different if we were not trying, you know, to do this. What happens essentially is, we'll board up areas, we receive a phone call, not only from our staff, but we, the owner owns the healthcare authority that's next door as well. So, their onsite security will call us and let us know if there's some type of activity. So, we schedule our onsite superintendent to go and board up the next day is typically what happens. So, it's kind of an ongoing type situation.
We just need to see some proof of what you're spending.
Oh, absolutely.
I think we ought to leave it on, just, you want my opinion.
Cindy, you know, we certainly appreciate the quality of the work that's been done by the developer across the city. You know, but when we're faced with these, we're not just faced with homeowners that have small issues. We have been faced with giant project issues, hoteliers that own property that have had to secure them. And so, I, you know, it is dangerous. And I know it's difficult, but my encouragement would be, I mean, I think it's, you know, one way or the other, if we leave it on or take it off. But the purpose of this conversation is to create a dialogue, in my opinion-
Absolutely.
-between you guys and staff to make a plan. And I'm not sure.
And I think if we leave it on-
Right.
-it puts pressure on them to, I mean, I mean, that's the whole purpose of it being on here, is for, we're going to go out and do it if you don't do it.
We can leave it on there. The point is, the point is, they need to, staff and the landowner need to meet out at the site and come up with a plan and come back and report to us at the next city council meeting what they agree on.
And I agree with that. And I don't think leaving it on precludes that from happening. I think it actually encourages that to happen.
Is it fair to say, though, that staff doesn't feel empowered to settle for anything less than what they consider full secural? And so, you could go meet, but you're not going to compromise unless we've given you some direction that that's acceptable, I guess.
That would be, that would be fair to say, Your Honor, that technically, as I understand the statute, if it has openings that allow not only for human access, but for disease-carrying animal access, that it is in violation of the statute. That is the-
So, that's our dilemma. They're not going to agree to a plan.
That is the dilemma that we, that we have, is as I understand the statute, then it remains-
What did you say, Mayor? I couldn't hear you. Well, I'm saying, our dilemma is, they're not going to agree to anything less than full secural of every opening in the building. So, if we want them to come up with a compromise plan, we have to somehow, I don't know what the vehicle is for that.
We would request that the council assist us in finding what that compromise might be.
Well, I think they need to go onsite and make some decisions about whether or not, you know, the upper floors can be left open or not, and come back and tell us that, but at the moment.
So, maybe staff would come back with what compromises could look like, not that they feel empowered to accept those compromises-
Right. But what they might look like.
With options for the council to consider.
And then we can decide.
I think that's a good idea. But I do think a meeting needs to occur at the property sooner rather than later.
Councilman Cooper, this is word seven. So, I'm most interested in your viewpoint.
And yes, and leaving, I think leaving it on, though, pushes them to get things done that I think we're able to really live with. And staff, I think, needs to do that. And that was the point of me asking, okay, since August, what has transpired, okay?
Sure.
Because we've given you up to November the 6th. We knew this day was coming. And yet, it doesn't seem like there's been enough effort to really address the issue in a way that would mitigate the whole situation. So, I think we need, leave it on. Ask staff to come back to meet before next council meeting and come back and report to us what that meeting and findings are.
May I suggest an alternate? Because staff is put in a bad situation out there, whether they're going to enforce it or not. I would suggest that if staff can go out there and meet with them, that'd be fine. But in lieu of that, I would think it would be incumbent upon the property owner to make a proposal as to what they think is reasonable for future security out there, instead of us trying to negotiate without, with the staff not knowing whether they've got the support of council to negotiate something less than what the ordinance call out for. So, if the property owner would like to propose something, come back to council and propose a plan, then that might be, that might be a better way to it.
I'm fine with them making a proposal, but I still think staff and the landowner need to go out to the site and walk through it so they're looking at the same thing.
Happy to do that.
I'm confused, Mayor.
Me a little bit as well.
What is our, what is our goal? Is our goal that this property, our goal is this property to be secured?
Our goal is to have this property secured and they pay for it.
Okay.
Yes. Until, until, and I'm willing to, you know, kind of go this way, until they can secure the financing and all of the historic preservation that is necessary to secure that financing. Otherwise, this is wonderfully property, but it really needs to go somewhere.
Then, okay, so we're ready as a council to say, we want it secured for you to get the financing and we'll give you how long to do it?
Okay.
Securing the financing, to me, is not our responsibility. If we want this thing secured, we ought to put some teeth into it as to what is expected each one. And if they have a way, if we say that the hammer nails over here and they say, oh, it's better to use screws, then that's fine, okay? But we got to get the job done by a certain period of time, or this thing is just going to go on and on and on.
I agree with you. We're just not going to sit around and wait for financing eight months, a year down the road.
And that, I mean, by keeping it on, that's fine. It will allow us to continue to spend the money and formulate a plan with staff. The only alternative would then be, it authorizes you, the council, then to go hire somebody to go do it, obviously, if you feel the need. And so, what we're asking for is securing a plan with staff. Whatever they deem required is what we'll do.
I was, I was just going to point out that the, that the definition of boarding and securing in the statute that applies is to board, close, board, or lock all exterior openings so as to prevent entry into the structure. So, I mean, that can be read as to prevent human entry, or you could read it broader to permit, to prevent entry by animals. I mean, it's, it's not 100% clear, but I think the primary objective of the statute is to keep people out. So, it just depends on what, what you could do is defer it for two weeks and let the staff and them to get together and go out and look at it and come back with a potential recommendation on the extent you want it secured. We want it secured. You're still going to have the same problem. If you, if you leave it on today, staff is still going to have the issue of having to work out with them the extent that we want it secured.
I have a question, probably a silly one at this point. You know, I believe the item was an unsecured structure. And so, you know, we have made efforts on daily occasion to secure the structure. So, it's not as if we're not, as the developer, making that effort. So, I would also like to ask the question, can we take it off and maybe put a plan together with staff and start the process over again, rather than to continue this back and forth? You know, this is not a situation where we're going to leave this, you know, 426,000 score foot facility just left, you know, unattended to. This is something that we are very anxious to move forward to and work with staff. We just have to have the ability for both parties to meet on staff and execute a plan. So, again, I just, you know, I think that the item at hand was, it's an unsecured structure. We have addressed the item of securing it on, on a daily occasion. I would like to ask that we just remove it and be free to work with staff on it. And then if we're not, as a developer, working with staff, we bring this issue up again.
I appreciate that. Personally, I would like to defer it so that we could hear back in a couple of weeks and hear what we have worked out, if anything. I don't know how it benefits us to leave it on and then get a report two weeks later to take it back off the list. I don't know. But, and I applaud y'all's efforts out there as far as knowing that it's continual and that you're not just, you know, leaving it alone. But I, I mean, that's a big project out there. I sure hope somebody's successful with it because it's, I agree, it's in a state of disrepair right now. But with the continual vandalism out there, I know that's just, that's a crazy job trying to take care of it daily. And, you know, you think you've got it secured, the next day, someone goes out there and says, it's not secure. You're like, yeah, we just secured it. But that's a tough job. But I'd prefer that we defer it for two weeks, bring it back, and hopefully have some kind of agreement.
I do not believe that Code Enforcement is presenting on the Thanksgiving docket, Mr. Mayor. That would be two weeks. Could we go to the first one in December?
I think two weeks would be fine.
Okay.
We'll do it.
All right. Well, I actually haven't really heard a motion to this effect yet.
We will do as, as directed.
Right. Thank you. Yeah.
Come back in two weeks.
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Let's, I'm moved that we would allow staff to meet with the owners, come up with a plan next week so that you are actually moving forward and securing according to specifications that will allow staff to say that you are securing this facility and move forward. So, in two weeks, we're expecting to see you back.
Yes.
That's my motion.
Okay. That is for G and H. I can defer both with one vote, right?
Yes.
Okay. So, G and H, we have a motion and a second for a two-week deferral. Any further discussion on that? Seeing none. Cast your votes. Passes eight to one.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah, you said, I was just trying to follow the thread. You did say you were opposed to a deferral, yes. Eight to one for the deferral. Okay. We're back really on, I would, I would suggest, the public hearing portion still. K1, public hearing regarding these listed unsecured structures now, except for the three that were deferred at the beginning of the meeting, the two that were just deferred. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak on any of these unsecured structures?
Move for approval.
Okay. I've got a motion and a second for K2, which is the resolution declaring that the structures are unsecured. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none. Cast your votes. Councilman Stone, cipher, you are, passes unanimously. 9L1, public hearing regarding abandoned buildings. We had two items here that were deferred at the beginning of the meeting, G and H. And we also have items J and K, which I would draw to your attention are the items that we just deferred on the previous item. Would we want to entertain a motion perhaps for those items here as well? J and K are the same items as just deferred previously.
I'm moved to defer J and K two weeks, just like we previously did.
Okay. Okay. We've got a motion and a second to defer items J and K for two weeks. Is there any discussion on that? Seeing none. Cast your votes. Passes eight to one. Now, we're back on 9L1, the public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to speak on any of these other remaining abandoned buildings? Seeing none. I would entertain a motion for 9L2, the resolution declaring the buildings are abandoned. Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. This brings us to 9M1 and 2. Item 2 will be a resolution adopting the capital improvement plan for fiscal years 2019 through 2023. Item 1 is a public hearing. We did have a presentation on this at our last meeting. Is there anyone besides Doug Dowler who wishes to speak on this item? Seeing none. Doug, you are most welcome to provide one last presentation.
Sorry to jump the gun there. Happy to be here today to talk about the five-year CIP plan, Capital Improvement Project Plan, that was introduced several meetings ago, and just kind of go over just briefly what's contained in there. The CIP plan is updated biennially. It's required by city councils, city ordinances, and state law. There's a number of sources that generate projects for the plan, GO bonds, Department Business Plan, Special Studies, City Council priorities. These have been presented to the various trusts and boards that oversee these various areas, such as the Airport Trust, Water Utilities Trust, COPPA. When we look at the size of the plan for the next five years, it's $3.2 billion in total. And this chart gives you a little bit of an idea of what- And this chart gives you a little bit of an idea of where the funding comes from for those projects. Obviously, the largest area is trust funds, and of course, the biggest piece there is the Water Utility Trust. Water Utility Trust is about $1.5 billion of the total. Geo bonds are the second-largest contributor at 20%, about $633 million. And then dedicated sales tax funds comprise the next highest source at $608 million, or about 19%, including the Better Street, Safer City, MAPS III as well are part of those sales tax funds. When we look at by the type of project, again, utilities is the largest portion of that at $1.5 billion, but streets are the second-largest category there, coming in at about $485 million. You can see the other various categories there below that. And so, again, we're looking at $3.2 billion over the next five years for capital construction. The presentations that you received last meeting, those departments represent 73% of the total CIP that's being, that is contained in the plan here. So the plan has been reviewed by the Planning Commission. They've given their approval. That was on October 11th, 2018, and the plan is presented to council today for a public hearing and adoption. And so I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Move approval of the plan.
Clerk and I are working something out. What have you got? You've got a motion and a second on item M2? All right, very good. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. We are now on nine N1 and 2. Two is a resolution authorizing acceptance of the joint award for the 2018 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant in the amount of $451,842, et cetera. There's a public hearing portion of this. Is there anyone who wishes to speak on the public hearing portion? Seeing none, I believe Chief City has a presentation.
Thank you, Councilman Mayor. The JAG grant, as the mayor had stated, was about $450,000 this year, total allocation. That Byrne grant that we receive on an annual basis, the 2018, will be divided between us and Oklahoma County and Midwest City. We get the lion's share of that, which is about $271,000. Our plan is to use it on a, really, a digital collecting program nowadays with video being such an evidentiary component of our cases and crimes. Detectives are spending a lot of time going out in the field just trying to collect video from convenience stores, things like that. So we're trying to do a pilot program with these funds. So we're going to actually pay somebody part-time, probably retired officers, part-time to go out and retrieve those and bring them back as evidence so those detectives can continue to investigate. So we're going to test that program out and see how it works, and hopefully it'll expedite things for our detectives and make their job a little less. County gets about 160. They're actually using theirs on a radio. They're actually going to lease from Oklahoma City the space by the radios so that we'll all be on the same working channels and be a lot more, a lot more operability that way with county and us working together, so that's the distribution.
Chief, how does this relate to what we received last year? Do we typically receive about a half million dollars?
It's been about the same for the last several years. We end up with about 250-plus. So, and we've had projects, we've funded, you know, continually for several years. Usually, I like the projects to be new projects, those types of things. Some of the projects that we have year after year after year, if it's working, we incorporate that into our regular budget.
Are these the dollars that we would have used years ago to do Weed and Seed and some of those?
No, Weed and Seed was a totally separate grant.
Separate program.
Yes, ma'am.
I'd move acceptance of the grant.
Got a motion and a second on the resolution nine N2. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. That brings us to nine O, collective bargaining agreement with the International Association of Firefighters Local 157 for the fiscal year we are currently in. I want to commend everybody with the city and with the IFF for bringing this to a relatively shorter conclusion, perhaps, than typical. And so commendations to the city manager and his team and personnel and those folks, and Scott Van Horn and his folks. So with that, I would entertain a motion.
I have a comment, because I have some concerns about this agreement. I have had for years. You know, we talk a lot about things that cost a million, two million, three million. We don't really ever have public discussions about one of our largest expenses, which is healthcare costs. We spend, you know, we talked about $150 million TIF. We spend almost $100 million a year on healthcare costs. So my concern is this, as I understand it. We're agreeing with these contract changes to increase insurance payments by about $2.5 million, which would be a 20% increase, unsustainable. About $1,000 per person on the, for those, per employee, for healthcare costs. Basically, we're paying FIRE the same amount that we pay on average for our employees. And that's really my concern. That's my sole focus and my comments here, is that it's important to understand that the city pays for all healthcare charges. If somebody has a medication that costs $10,000 a month, that's the taxpayers of Oklahoma City paying that. If somebody has cancer and they're in the ICU for a month, or they're having treatment for a year, the taxpayers of Oklahoma City are paying for that. We talk about, you know, $100,000, $200,000 here, but the taxpayers pay for each and every, all the medicines we use, all the hospitalizations, all the doctor visits, those are all, the taxpayers pay that. So a number of years ago, FIRE left this city's health insurance plan, and they wanted to do their own health insurance. So what happens is this process called adverse selection, which is in the insurance world, is if you take a healthier population of people and you remove them from the pool, then the pool that's still there has a higher cost per person, right? If you look at the 11 or 12 of us, I'm not saying we're old or older, right? What would our healthcare cost be versus the average firefighter? And there's, just if you look at the non-firefighter employees, it's an older population. It's probably a more obese population. There's a good study that came out this month linking obesity to virtually every chronic disease that's costing us the bulk of the money. So you have a healthier population that was removed, you then have an older, sicker population that has a higher per cost for those other 3,500 employees. So somehow, we got into the situation where, now FIRE would say, and they've said to me, and I think, well, we want to leave because we want to run things differently. We want to, you know, the city insurance policy is very generous, maybe irresponsibly generous. If you look at the cost of the deductibles and the copayments, and it's just incredibly low compared to other insurance plans out there. So they've said, well, we want to, you know, maybe pay more for that, have a more expensive plan, and that way we can save some money and we can put that aside, and then our retirees who are having to pay more and more each year, you know, the younger people can help pay, the older population, the retirees can offset that. And so they've built up this reserve of about $10 million doing that. So I think that's a legitimate argument for, but I don't think that's the primary or sole reason that they've left. What I suspect is that the cost, the healthcare charges for that group of employees, firefighters, is less on a per-person basis than the 3,500 over here. And yet, what we're agreeing to year after year is that we will pay the per-person cost of the older, sicker, more obese, more chronic disease, will pay that amount, you know, for this. And that, to me, is how you're able to bill up this $10 million reserve. So how big does that reserve get? 15 million, 20 million, 25 million? I mean, it doesn't, at some point, I just think you need to look at that. And the way you look at it, I think Diana Barry has indicated she's tried to do this, is for the firefighters to share their healthcare costs. What are you, because they're doing the same thing now. They're just paying all their healthcare charges themselves. They're self-insuring, like we self-insure. We each have like a third party, like Blue Cross Blue Shield, that manages it, but basically the city of Oklahoma City pays all the healthcare charges. So now firefighters are paying all their healthcare charges. So share with us what you're paying per person, because we're giving you like $15 million, right, a year. So are you spending $15 million a year on healthcare charges or some other number? So to be fair, I can't know that what I'm saying is true. That's the point. I don't know. So I can't vote for this today because I don't know if it's a fair agreement. I don't know what it costs for that pool of employees, and I don't know what it's cost over the last decade where they've built up this $10 million reserve. But we all, you know, I've argued for transparency on a lot of issues, and I think this is one. We need transparency on what is one of the most expensive outlays for operating costs that we have. It dwarfs everything else, street care costs, park maintenance. It's $190 million a year. So let's have maximum transparency. And so I think FIRE should share what they spend per year so that we can have a more informed, because we share that information. It's public information, what we spend per employee. So until we get that information, I just, I don't, I can't make a, I can't be in favor of something, I don't know if it's fair or not. Thanks.
Thank you.
And it's not fair, right? The police have retirees also, right? And they're paying more and more and more each year. So maybe, you know, you have to be fair to the police retirees and the ASME retirees and all. The simplest way, if the argument is, well, we should spend the same, we should do the same amount for the FIRE employees as all the other employees, well, the simplest way to do that would be FIRE comes back under the city and the city does what it does for its other 3,500 employees. If you're in the ICU for a month, we pay for it. If you're on this medication that costs $10,000 a month, we pay for it. We do the exact same thing that we do for all of our other employees. That would be the simplest way to make it fair. But if we're not going to do that, if FIRE wants to be off on their own, I suspect because they have a healthier pool and it costs less, then let's just be transparent and share that information. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Any further comments on the item? We do not have a motion on the table if someone would like to make it. Got a motion? Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion on item nine O? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes, one, two, three, four, five, six to two. All right, thank you. Now we have item nine P1, resolution authorizing municipal councillor to confess judgment without admitting liability in the case of Plemons, the city of Oklahoma City. I don't believe we need executive session. I'd entertain a motion.
Move the item.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item nine Q, enter into executive session on advice of the municipal councillor to receive confidential communications regarding the pending opioid litigation that we approved some months ago.
Move the item into executive session.
Okay, got a motion and a second. Any discussion on that? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. We will handle that executive session at the end of the meeting. Now we are at claim, we are at item 10A1, claims recommended for approval. I don't believe we need executive session. There are four items here. There's literally no one in the chamber, so there is no one who could speak.
Move approval.
So I've got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. That brings us to item 11, items from council. And before I go around the horseshoe, why don't we start with the items listed here? A is a resolution adopting legislative agenda. B is a resolution adopting the federal agenda. These were both vetted through the Legislative Committee about a month ago, and Jane Abraham from the city manager's office is here to brief us all.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. I'm Jane Abraham, Community and Government Affairs for the city of Oklahoma City, and I just, we'll go through these very quickly as far as the legislative issues that we're looking at for the upcoming year. If I can get this slide to advance, let's see. Ah, there we go. Okay, so just briefly, the process that we have is to bring forward legislative issues. The city manager asks department heads for items that they believe require a legislative fix, either on the state or federal level, and those items are then vetted through the council legislative committee, which met on October 16th this year. And then we move forward with those issues once the legislative sessions begin, working with our legislative consultants. So just to recap, from 2018, we had several initiated items that were successful. I won't read through all of these, but we did have quite a few items that we had brought forward that were successful last year. So that was, that was good that that happened. Were able to address several things that had been brought forward, everything from trying to deal with the new alcohol laws and also dealing with car crushers and trying to prevent car theft. So moving forward to the upcoming legislative issues, our priority issues, of course, is local control over local issues. There are several things that we feel need to be handled at the city level versus being preempted by state legislation that we work on every year. We'd like to increase funding for transit, which has not been increased for a very long time, and the city gets a portion of that for our transit service. We also want to preserve funding for the Heartland Flyer rail service, and then also preserve the existing sales tax base, which is so very important to us and to all municipalities. As far as our initiative items for the upcoming year, we'd like to see enabling legislation for public safety districts. That's something that's been kind of in the hopper for several years, and we feel like there's a good opportunity for that to be successful this year. The next two items are dealing with our airports, having a longer period of time, enabling them to negotiate leases for a longer period of time in accordance with FAA guidelines, and then also to clarify the statute in Title 60, dealing with competitive bidding. The fourth item is to fix the statutory reference in open meeting posting requirement, and then the last one is to address the definition of package sales for on-premise sales of alcohol as it pertains to golf course operations, should that be necessary. That's one of those issues that we may be able to address with able commission and may not need legislation, but at this point, we're not, it has not been resolved. So our support issues for 2019, there's a kind of a significant list of these. Of course, with the passage of the Supreme Court decision on Wayfair versus South Dakota, the Oklahoma Tax Commission will be working on implementing the collection of internet sales tax. And so we support their efforts to make that happen if there are legislative requirements and that kind of thing, but of course, the tax commission is the lead on that particular issue. And then we also support their efforts to enforce existing exemptions. The third item is to retain tools for economic development. That's something that comes, seems to come up every year as far as dealing with different incentives and then also with the TIF districts and trying to change the rules for those. And so we've got that as a support issue. And then also, there are efforts to increase resources for infrastructure, and so we support those. We want to preserve municipalities' ability to address derelict properties and enforce municipal codes and zoning, and also support the Oklahoma Department of Mental Health with their Smart On Crime program. And then the final item is to support efforts to allow municipal input on billboard permitting within cities, and that's an ODOT process. As far as issues to monitor, there's also several of those. Really, the new, the new one that's added kind of to the list this year is to the medical marijuana issue, which of course was passed by voters in June, and that, there may be some impacts for that, which need to come back to council as far as whether those will impact city operations. Okay, as far as our federal legislative issues, as I mentioned, for 15 years, we've had our number one issue being collection of internet sales tax, which was resolved this last summer with Wayfair versus South Dakota. So now we've got funding for transportation and transit and also infrastructure, so several transportation issues that are, that kind of come to the fore. Under the support issues, the American Indian Cultural Center and Museum, we've got that as a support, to support them to obtain funding for exhibits. And then we have several issues to monitor. Of course, the implementation of sales tax collection, enforcement of Clean Air Act and EPA standards, which we were very close to being out of compliance this last summer. And then also the Opportunity Zone, which is a new legislative initiative that we're watching very closely and hope to participate in. And that's all I have. If anybody has questions for me? If anybody has questions for me.
Any questions for Jane? All right. Well, we would then entertain a motion for item 9A, I'm sorry, 11A.
Move. Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Does that, that's something Francis would do. I really not qualified to.
Six.
Okay. Passes unanimously. All right. And then a motion for 11B.
Move the item.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. That brings us to items from council, not listed on the agenda. We'll start down here. Counsel Mr. Deeb.
David, have you, David, have you seen this Matisse report on the Boathouse Foundation? Or has anybody seen this? Have you seen it, David?
No, I'm sorry. Would you say that again?
There's a study by a group called Matisse on the Boathouse Foundation.
No, I haven't.
Because I would be very interested to hear your thoughts if we could get it to everyone that hasn't heard it. I mean, I was disappointed that this wasn't provided to us before we voted for $7 million to the Boathouse Foundation with the director there and board members here. We could have asked some questions about this in the last meeting, but it wasn't provided to us. In fact, it was just in the Oklahoman after our meeting. But I think, you know, that's something that should be provided to us. If it's, we voted as a group that we wanted more time to think about it, and it still wasn't provided to us in that two weeks. But David, there's stuff primarily about financial management and some accounting issues, putting, one of their recommendations was to, a cost accounting system in place to accurately track profitability by business line, and they're saying that significant cost line items were improperly allocated to different business lines. For example, utilities were put under facility operations as opposed to under adventures. So they're saying that you're disguising how much the whitewater operation is actually losing because you're just moving utilities, which is the biggest thing over there. And they recommended hiring a CFO. You've got board members saying things like, there's no consistency in reporting, there's no plans, we do not have any metrics, we only see what's right in front of us. The products and services are lacking rigorous financial analysis that put the viability of programs in jeopardy. There's inadequate financial reporting to help make decisions. There's a need to improve budget to actual comparisons. There's a lack of consistent enterprise-wide report formats and information. And so I just think, at some point in the next few months, if we could get Mr. Knop back here, and specifically, if we could be provided with a 2017 tax return as soon as it's available, my understanding is it's not out yet, but in looking at the tax returns from 2016, 15, 14, 13, where they're losing millions of dollars, I'd be curious to see what happened in 2017, and I'd be curious to see what you think about it with this stuff along with these recommendations. But I think it's something, now, these are significant public funds that are going into this. This report is disturbing. I think that there are people that are leaving the organization that are disturbed. There are board members that are disturbed, and I think it deserves some scrutiny.
I'd be curious to see if the CFO's been hired. I'd like to see who that person is and what his thoughts are.
Yeah, because that was a strong recommendation in this report, is that Knop is not qualified to do that. It needs to be, he can't, he has too many things on his plate, and you need to hire a CFO fairly urgently. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you.
Your Honor, when I'm not here working on city business, I work with income tax returns and at both the federal level and the various states, and we file them basically, well, any state that has income tax, we work with. There's always the ability, because sometimes they disagree with our interpretations of the law. And so there's always the ability to forego going to court to try to resolve these differences, and it's an internal appeals process. The IRS is very concerned about avoiding the cost and the consequences of litigation. Most tax agencies are too. I would like for the city to look at the ability to create an internal appeals process when citizens and the city cannot come to an agreement. And I'm going to give an example and see if that has any interest from the council as a whole, and see if there's other areas that this might be helpful or useful. And really, what it's designed to do, both with all the tax authorities, is to allow an informal process to take place, because CPAs can represent their clients instead of hiring an attorney to represent them before these tax authorities. Or the taxpayer could go by themselves and present their perspective on the matter to a third party, somebody who's knowledgeable of the tax rules, but was not a part of the examination that created the differences. Because sometimes, these differences occur due to differences in personality. You just can't get along with the examining agent. Or, another way of saying it, the examining agent could not get along with the taxpayer or the representative of the taxpayer. It happens both ways. And so it's an internal appeals process. So there's a developer out in South Oklahoma City who was developing property and removed, I'm going to use some technical terms, a temporary silt fence that was used for erosion control to allow the implementation of permanent sod and earth berm to be used for this erosion control. So one of the stormwater division's employees looked upon this and said, oh, you've got to put that temporary silt fence back in there. And the developer said, well, no, I'm just removing it temporarily because I'm in the process of bringing 10 semi-truck loads of sod and permanent erosion control materials in place. That cost of bringing in the permanent, much more extensive type of erosion control, the developer spent $50,000. Now, temporary silt fence costs about $1,000 for this particular project. Plus, this particular developer had a 10-acre farm to where any runoff was going to his own farm, and again, he was doing everything he believed was appropriate, and more so to prevent erosion. It was a situation that I'm going to say escalated to the point where the representative of the stormwater division said, well, that's not what I told you to do, issued a citation. So now the developer has to go to court, municipal court, and presented his case, so now a hearing's been set in municipal court. This sounded to me like a situation where if we had an internal appeals process, the two parties could go informally, without a court hearing, and try to resolve this. Because I would think the ultimate outcome is to minimize erosion into the city waterways. And apparently, that had been accomplished, and certainly was a major concern by the developer, but the representative of the city didn't see it that way. So instead of forcing this situation to court, having an attorney represent the developer and all this, if we could somehow create a process for internal appeals, I think it would be well worth our time. As I thought about this, I don't think necessarily that everyday traffic violations would go this route. I mean, I just don't see that. That probably should go to municipal court if somebody gets a ticket, even though there's instances, I mean, I've heard about it, to where the driver wasn't completely at fault but still got a citation for whatever reason. But for certain other types of disagreements, that we could create an administrative appeals process to where before it has to go to court, whether it's municipal court or outside of court, that we have some type of appeals process where the parties that were involved initially in the disagreement could both present their side of it, and, but it would be an unrelated party that would hear it, somebody that's knowledgeable of the issue. And with the intention of it being a fair impartial hearing, so there's no ex parte discussion on either part, so the citizen couldn't talk with whomever the appeals officer is privately, nor could the city employee talk with the appeals person privately. I mean, that's just standard procedure in any kind of an internal appeals process. You just don't have people talking and trying to push their case closer to the edge on that. So just a thought. Yes, Jim?
You know, first of all, we have some very formalized appeal processes with the Board of Adjustment and the Board of Appeals for certain areas. You're talking about something that wouldn't probably fall under the umbrella of either of those two processes.
Yeah.
I will tell you that there is very much an ad hoc process that is live and well today, because generally, if you are unhappy, if a developer's unhappy with the inspector, he goes directly to the, either the Public Works Director or the Utilities Director and voices that concern, and they have discussions. And generally, if that developer still isn't happy, he calls my office and either talks to Mr. Clowers or myself to get that. And I think these are, I'm not saying they don't happen, because obviously, they do happen, and some amount of times, they happen under the heat of the moment. Generally, there is a process where we do have an informal process, and most of these do get worked out. I can't speak directly to the one that you referred to, because I don't know any of the facts of that one.
Yeah.
But I will say that on a regular basis, and then sometimes if they're unhappy with anything that comes out of the city manager's office, they'll talk to the council person, and then we review it. And so there is, it isn't as formal, but I think it does work most of the time.
Okay. Dylan, I appreciate that, and I hope that's the case. But given this situation and the possibility other situations occurring, I would just like for the council and city manager and department heads to think in terms of, could that be helpful? Could they envision other situations occurring to where if we did have an appeals process, if the two parties disagree, you could notify the citizens and say, here's, we've got this process that allows you to share your perspective. But once that citation is issued, it's kind of like a traffic ticket. We can't talk to chief city at that point to say, chief, your officer may have made a mistake on this matter. I mean, we get in trouble if we start interfering at that level. And so I'm just saying, if we had a process in place, maybe it wouldn't elevate up to that level of a citation. That's all I'm just throwing out there. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel only. Counsel McCubbin.
Just briefly, during the Municipal Facilities Authority portion of today, we received a committee report on drainage improvement. And normally, I don't bring something up like that, but I wanted to personally thank Eric and the Public Works staff for this report, just because I've dealt with the homeowners that are experiencing the flooding and the erosion on their property, and this will be a fun call to make this afternoon and tell them that we'll be working on these improvements. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. All right. That concludes items from council. We're on item 12, city manager reports. We have A, B, and C.
Would be happy to answer any questions regarding the reports. No presentations.
The reports are available online where you find the council agenda at OKC.gov. Are there any questions for the city manager? Seeing none. Citizens to be heard. In a rarity for my tenure, there is no one in the room, unless there's a ghost here. There is no citizen to be heard, which means we will now proceed into the previously approved executive sessions on four different items on the agenda, and then we will return.